Called the order for Watertown City Council meeting for December sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise while Councilman Dan Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, this is this new day you've given us, like always, we thank you for the life and breath and everything else you've given us. And just pray tonight as we gather here to in in from different capacities, Lord, from the Corps of Engineers to the media to councilmen to other I other people here for items on the agenda. Just guide us, give us wisdom in this direct in this in this process, Lord. And we actually, we pray for those of the media, Lord, we pray for first responders, we pray for other folks. But, Lord, there's those that are trying to help us communicate in this city. So we pray for them as well today, Lord, to give them the the right words to speak and to share and to communicate so we can better just better communicate as for the city as a whole, Lord, and we just pray all this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager.
Okay, Peters.
Here.
Okay, Shuddy.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Beeler.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Holene.
Here.
Jerrance.
Here.
Thank you.
Court is established, Chair will entertain, so I have one minor change on the agenda. So the very last item, which is going to be twelve G is are the engineering standards. And so the motion is going to be approval of resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-three, adoption of the revisions of the engineering design standards minus section one dash ten. And that is the mailboxes. So we are striking all conversation about the mailboxes tonight. So the engineering sta- standards are going to be all the other things that are still in there minus the mailboxes. So that's going to be the motion once we get there. Once, uh, with that said, if there's no further changes, I would like a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Shuddy, any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're now into open forum, is there anyone here who would like to address the council on something not on the agenda? I'll close open forum and we will go into item nine A, an approval to raise the project budget from one million eight hundred thousand to two million six hundred and fifty thousand and authorize the finance officer to issue a special check to the United States Army Corps of Engineers for the flood control feasibility study, project number two-one-one-eight, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're going to go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson, for more information.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Back in August twenty-twenty-two, the city entered into an agreement with the U.S. Corps of Engineers for a flood control feasibility study as a fifty-fifty split. That that agreement was for one point eight million dollars. Typically, these studies cost three million dollars, but because of the the decades of of work that that's been, of previous studies, thought that the the one point eight would be appropriate. The the additional funds is due to the or the additional requests due to adding several additional alternatives and performing a required risk assessment. So the the new budget amount is two point six five million, which is still less than the three million typically. Of that, the local share will increase from nine hundred thousand to one point two five million. The city has already received funds from the South Dakota DNR in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand. And with this increase, if with this increase, we'd apply for some additional funding in the an additional one hundred and seventy-five thousand to cover that our half of the city half of the local share. And if that's approved by the state, the total city cost would be six hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's some folks here from the the Corps of Engineers for questions if needed, and I'll stand by as well.
All right, thank you very much, Engineer Peterson. This is how I'd like to make it happen, I know that we have people from the Army Corps of Engineers and we probably have a few other people who would like to testify on this item. I don't have to do a public hearing, but I would like to. But so my intention is going to be to bring up the Army Corps of Engineers because I would like an update upon what has been happening in the recent months since we last saw you. Some information that you probably have for the council and the community that would be valuable. But in order to facilitate some questions back and forth, I'm going to take a motion to approve the budget increase right now. Motion made by Councilman Tupper.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Danforth, so could I have the people from the the good people from the Army Corps of Engineers, if all three of you can fit up on at the council or? Yes, so if there are any questions directly for Engineer Peterson right now, is that who you wanted to? Yeah.
Either that or Chris, somebody.
Okay, yeah, so let's ask some questions to the city as far as some information you probably have regarding the motion, Councilman Danforth.
Thank you very much. Couple things, uh, Justin, I I think you had said that that the state has paid the four fifty, which is their our split with them, correct? Has that been paid or has it been committed to?
Paid.
So it's been paid?
Yep.
If we look at proceeding and going with the additional expenses here, my question is, is what if we don't get state funding for that split? Does that change our decisions or or is really our decision based on us paying it all and hopefully we get the the cost share and then when does that, when is that decision made at the state level?
The the application deadline is June first of twenty-twenty-five and then we'll know approval or a recommendation for approval, I should say, from the board in November-ish timeframe. And then officially, the funds would come to the city in April, March, April of twenty twenty-six.
So my question is, and I'm not sure if it's of these people or you, so I'll just throw it out there. When, do we have a deadline for when we have to make a decision on proceeding farther, you know, as as is being recommended here? Is there a deadline for that?
So, based on the schedule and budget and our scope of work, we will run out of funding in March. But, you know, we would, we came here with hoping for a decision on how you guys wanted to proceed tonight because you know, we don't want to spend funds unnecessarily and, you know, if we, if you choose not to go forward, there we we obviously do have funds from the last check we just received and anything that's not spent would be returned back to the city.
So you're looking for thumbs up or down tonight?
Correct.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that, it's the same same thing, so if we decide not to move forward with the extra funding tonight, am I right to assume that the Army Corps of Engineers is basically going to wash their hands and say, okay, the city of Watertown is no longer interested in moving forward?
That's correct, because the way we look at it is it's it's your study, you know, we're here to assist you. But if if the city doesn't want to pursue, then no, we wouldn't be pursuing anything.
Okay. Because I'll get more, I'll get more on that later, but the concern that I have is if we were to stop funding now from the city's perspective, we are basically saying to everyone in Watertown, we're not interested in pursuing a flood control mid, uh, plan. That's the concern that I have.
Trying to understand.
Because it's like as much concern as I have about the plan that was proposed, I have more concern facing the citizens of Watertown and telling them that we're not going to go forward trying to address the situation. So I just want to make sure that I and everyone in the community understands that what what's at stake here tonight. So, um, any other questions from the council right now, Councilman Tupper?
Interim City Manager and CFO, Bob Zine, if if we go ahead and do this and we don't get reimbursement from the state, which we probably will, that total amount was already budgeted, if I'm correct, right?
No.
No.
No, anything after this, our share, we would not have had in the budget. So it would be unrestricted fund balance at that time.
Thank you.
Mayor. Councilman Jerrance?
Question for Justin. In your past experience, what's our chances of getting the reimbursement for this additional funding from the state? Is it fifty-fifty, is it ninety percent chance? Yeah, it's important because the city of Watertown is on the line here.
There's, nothing's guaranteed. Had, I've had conversations with the folks at DNR and at least in staff level, they they feel confident, but ultimately, it's up to the board to decide.
That's that's the state board?
Yep.
So I feel like we've started digging for gold here. And we spent a lot of money getting three quarters of the way through the the hole. And we don't know what we're going to get at the end, a lot of those places, a lot of those gold miners go broke. I mean, I watch Discovery Channel once in a while. Wow, we're just kind of, we're stuck, what's your thoughts?
Permission to speak candidly.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a, this is a big deal because I totally understand where Councilman Jerrance is coming from, this is a lot of money.
The I I I can't say for certain, but I think there's there's some confidence that the state would support the, you know, half of our local share. We are, I I think at a staff level, you know, when it does flood, it takes up all of our resources. And so I I'm, I I would like to see some sort of of plan, flood fee, you know, whether it's levies or whatever it is. Just just because of the the extent of of the operations that we we take on as a city every every few years. You know, the flooding occurs here in Watertown, you know, every two, three years, so for, you know, a month or so, depend on the event, two to two weeks, three weeks to a month or more. There's a lot of resources used within the city. So I I'm a big proponent of this this project.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
More later.
Okay, Councilman Tupper?
So how many millions of dollars over the years do you think we've spent on flood protection, or not flood protection, but studies? Any idea, I mean, anybody from the Corps have any idea? It's in the multi-millions of dollars I would presume. So I guess to my point, we've gone this far and in all due respect for Councilman Jerrance's comments, I don't want to spend the extra one hundred and eighty-five thousand or maybe three hundred and seventy. But we've thrown so many millions of dollars at this and not come up with a solution yet. I'd hate for us not to move forward with just by the chance of maybe not getting that other other one hundred and eighty-five thousand, so.
So with the Army Corps, would you please remind us of your names so that we?
Um, I'm Sarah Miller, I'm the project manager and lead planner for the study.
And I'm I'm Greg Johnson, right now, I'm the acting planning branch chief, normally, I'm the plan formulation section chief.
And I'm Jeff Mahulka, I'm the technical lead for the project.
All right, thank you, and Mrs. Miller, I know, would you give us a quick update upon what has been happening from your perspective? Let's say the public feedback, anything else that has been going on that would be of of interest to the council and the community?
Yeah, um, so last time you guys saw me, it was September for the public meeting. I think we had about two hundred people attend. And then from there, we accepted public comments till about mid-October. We received total probably about thirty to forty comments. Majority of comments came from residents around Lake Compesca and residents along, there's a strip of houses along Sixth Street. And then we've also received comments from our own internal policy reviewers. We received comments from an external peer review that the Corps funds separately outside of the cost share. And then in addition to that, we also conduct an agency technical review, which includes basically technical experts from across the country for different core districts. And they review the report to look at everything from the, you know, H and H analysis to real estate to how we formulated our plans, to how we screened them out, to how we selected our economics, everything like that. And so to date, we have received, let's see here, probably about maybe two hundred and fifty comments total. The external peer review, we real, we only received twelve. They kind of summarized it as it was a well-crafted report. And just with a couple comments and questions. U.S.A.'s policy was definitely more on all the, it much more into the weeds on how we formulated our plans. But overall, we received positive feedback on that. Public comments, they were probably overall, you know, negative feedback on lowering the lake. And then the majority of the comments from the residents at the Sixth Sixth Street, they did not want the levy in behind their houses. And and then we did receive two comments from different agencies, which included the South Dakota DNR and then EPA, so.
And what did those two reports or correspondences reveal?
So.
If you can tell.
Yeah, so, um, so the DNR, their comments were on the existing permits for the weirs. Both the weir that we, that is currently in our plan to modify by removing the stoplogs and then the sedimentation weir. And so we met with them last week to talk through their comments and ultimately it is okay to remove the stoplogs under, it's F C three? A F C three permit. And then we talked with them about, you know, maybe changing some of our plans on using the is it low flow? The, yeah, the low-flow gates on the sediment weir, which they were in agreement with. And then they just talked to us about kind of what the overall flood control permit would look like and how that process works. And so we're going to stay in communication with them and have a follow-up meeting pending how the outcome of this meeting goes. And with game and parks, because they do have water rights that we want to discuss with them as well.
Based upon what you have heard in the public feedback section, have you modified your plan at all? And if so, could you tell us what that might be?
Sure, so based on feedback from both the public meeting and our public comments, we did look at running the alternative that we had recommended in the draft report. And we removed the lake lowering portion. And so what that did is that increases the heights or the height of the levy and possibly requires us to potentially widen the river a little bit more in order to convey that water. But fortunately, the levy height, based on our preliminary model, is showing that we would only have to raise it by point three feet, which is not very much. So cost-wise, that that's a good thing. And in addition to that, I'm trying to think of what else we've.
Would there be any change to the proposed levies in town along the river?
So, yeah, so those would, those would be higher.
Okay. That's the higher sector.
Yes, and then the concern, though, is that without lowering the lake, one, there is induced damages, so that means that we're pushing water downstream of two-twelve on approximately fifty-two structures. I think that's a mix of residential and commercial. And then the BCR, the economic benefit cost ratio, it does go below one quite a bit. So that that goes against our normal policy of needing to recommend a plan above one. And so we would have to go down possibly two other paths that would require obtaining a waiver from the Assistant Secretary of the Army, which could add some time to the study.
And by some time, can you speculate?
So we did, um, ask others that have gone through this process, which is not very many. And the past experience has been four to six months. Our concern or, you know, that that might be actually longer is that, you know, with the new administration, there will be a new Assistant Secretary of the Army appointed, so I'm not sure how that's going to go.
And if it goes below one, how many projects that are beneath one on that scale ever get funded from the federal government?
So, um, this is relatively new of us not justifying a plan just on the, you know, National Economic Development Plan, the NED Plan. So there's been a maybe less than a handful that have gone through this process. It's not that it can't get done, it's just it's new. It's unclear on how that's going to look, maybe how long that could take. It's unclear on how that's going to look, maybe how long that could take in, in getting the waiver. But it's something that, you know, we're more than willing to go down that path and try to justify the plan on that.
Okay. And one of the reasons, just to explain to everyone, if we don't have federal cost share on this, Watertown cannot afford a solution on its own. So, if we are going to propose a plan that is not going to ultimately get federal support, you could ask the question, why would we go forward with it? So, I want to thank the Corps and the council for allowing me. I knew I had some of these questions that I thought would be in the community. I just want to make one more thing clear. So, you have chosen to take the lake lowering portion out of this plan? Or is that just a consideration right now?
It, it's a consideration. If, if that's, you know, how the sponsor, being the city, wants to, you know, move forward, then we can certainly look at that. The other option would be looking at it as a locally preferred plan. But the issues or concerns with that is that when you go to construction, the cost sharing isn't necessarily split 65/35.
Okay.
It can be more for the, the sponsor.
Okay. Thank you, Council, for indulging me. I am done. Councilman Jones.
So, is this Alternative 8 that you have revised by not using the lake?
Yes.
All right. So, the only change in Alternative 8 was not using the lake as, or lowering it to take up 20, 24 hours' worth of water? But you're saying that doing that would flood 52 structures in Watertown, and it makes a cost-benefit analysis shift that much?
So, we lose the benefits that we were seeing from lowering the lake. So, we lose those benefits, and then, the costs will go up because we have to raise the levies. And then, without having that temporary storage of the water in the lake, that does, in, right now, what our model is showing, that is that it would induce damages on 50 structure, 52 structures.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
Go ahead.
Council, anything else? Councilman Beeler?
I have a couple of comments. You know, we, this is something we've been trying to do for a long time. We've waited years to get this study. So, if we, if we balk on this thing, I think we're going to regret it. I think that we need to follow through with this. I mean, we've been pushing this for a long, long time. Finally, we got, we got the, the folks to come up and work with us on this project, and I think we need, I really do think we need to follow up. I don't know, I don't think there's anything we can do as a city without Corps approval. Is that correct? If we're do, if we're dealing with the waterways, do we have to have approval from the Corps?
Because we don't currently have a federal project up here, you would still need to go through the regulatory permitting process in terms of Clean Water Act 404 compliance. But, but other than that, there wouldn't be any, any other permitting through the Corps other than through the regulatory program if you were to pursue something on your own. And then, you certainly would want to coordinate whatever you're proposing to do with FEMA, because there, from in terms of the impacts or benefits from, to the National Flood Insurance Program, you would want to make sure that FEMA is involved in that review process. But, but in a lot of communities, we have federal levies. And so, if people want to invest other things, we end up getting involved in evaluating whether or not those changes are going to affect our federal levies, but we don't have any of that here. So, the regulatory program would be the only, the only avenue in terms of the Corps permit process that you'd have to follow. Everything else would be through state flood, state and city floodplain and, and FEMA.
You know, and I'll just make one other comment. I know, I think we all agree, there's an issue. There's definitely a flood issue. And it is something that we need to deal with. Something's got to be done. Unless anybody else has a better idea, and, and maybe they do. But I, I would like to hear that. And then, you have one other question, just out of curiosity. If we did use the storage in the lake, how often would that typically occur? I think you have some data that shows where we might need to do that.
Based on past observations from the lake, usually, it's about 30% of the time. And one thing to note is that 30% of the time is probably when you're going to be experiencing a lot of wet conditions in your basin. You'll be seeing a lot of rain that year, you're going to see higher lake levels, and that's why the lake is higher. So, by lowering it, gaining that storage, you know, typically, you might be in a fall with a wet condition going into a winter, going into a spring, where you might have flood concerns because you have wet basin conditions. If you have that storage in the lake, that could help your flooding situation.
Thank you. Councilman Chuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, and thank you for your, all your work on this up to now. So, a couple of questions here, Ms. Miller, which you had shared on with widening the river a little bit more, so a little bit more. Just curious on, you know, I think we're talking about a, was it potentially 50 feet or up to 100 feet total, depending on the area in the floodway that would be, I believe? If you could clarify that just a little bit?
Sure. So, I'm sure you can tell I'm not an engineer. So, but the concern is that because this first run that we did with the model, you know, it's showing that induced damages. So, trying to sort out, like, maybe there's something we can do to alleviate that. You know, maybe that's, like I said, maybe it's just a little bit more widening would take off that, you know, extra water, or maybe it's, you know, we're looking at a, we're still running the model to look at a detention basin upstream as well. Maybe all those things would, wouldn't require that. And so, that's where, when we took out that, you know, 3,300 acres of water storage, we just have to figure out where that's going to, when it goes through the town and how that'll work, so.
So, the next leg of this study potentially will help figure, calculate this, figure out maybe what other options there may be?
Yes, yes. That's, so currently, we're in what we call optimization phase. So, you know, taking this plan and trying to figure out what, what are the best things that we can do to get the best benefits out of? And so, that's where we've just, you know, in preparation for these, this meeting and the questions we thought we'd receive, we, you know, we were trying to see what it would look like with taking the lowering of the lake out.
Okay. And you have to follow up some more? So, you mentioned 52 structures potentially theoretically. That's where this recalculation, widening the river, higher, you know, levies, whatever that may be, that could, if we didn't do any of that adjusting, that's what would be affected, if I'm, if I'm seeing this correctly? If we make these adjustments, we find a little more room for water to flow, then we could potentially protect those 52 properties? That would be the purpose of trying to widen or raise levies and kind of do some more figuring?
So, yeah. So, potentially, that would work otherwise. You know, we, we can't recommend a plan that's, that's going to, you know, push water on other structures necessarily. So, this would have to get reviewed by our Office of Counsel in DC. And, you know, some of the mitigation options might be a flood easement on these structures, or maybe floodproofing, and that get, those costs then get incorporated into the overall cost. And, and I, I don't know exactly what the induced damages was, like specifically, like how much. I just know previously, on some of the other alternatives we were running, I mean, we were talking like maybe an inch of water on an, on a structure that's already maybe seeing a foot of water at like 100-year or 500-year event. So, it, it is minimal, but we still want to make sure that we're not inducing damages.
Okay. Follow-up? All right. And so, okay, so another subject then, or same subject, but now, we're talking about the river, the widening, the floodway. I just, if you, if someone could clarify to me the, the floodway, what that would theoretically look like through the city? You know, is there pretty much, do you take all trees out of a floodway in this, in this concept? So, if, if, is that correct? And if that is correct, then that would definitely change, of course, the looks through the, through town. We'd lose all the trees along the river all the way through, which I understand the, you know, getting the water to flow, you can have these hindrances. But just want to clarify that. And then, so then on that, if, yeah, if you could clarify that point, what that would look like through the city? And then, also, is there other, this, this isn't your first rodeo, I would assume. Have you seen this, this done already in other communities, where they widened the floodway? They've, they're, they're doing this concept where it's already been proven? I'm just curious if, if there's other examples of this, and if it's proven working or not?
So, to answer your first question, yep. We would have to remove trees, maybe larger woody shrubs. But we do have to mitigate for that, and so, we have factored that in. And right now, we're proposing to do, in conjunction with that detention basin I talked about, that's where we were going to do more of the wetland mitigation. But, you know, we don't want to remove trees, and we can look at other areas of maybe replanting trees in other places, we can incorporate that. Yeah, but yes, they just need to be out of the, the floodway. And then, in regards to widening the channel, you know, the nice part about the big sewer up here, it, it is very connected to the natural floodplain. But, you know, it's always nice to have, you know, area, I mean, if a river does naturally flood, to have that area to expand. I realize that a lot of this is in that, in the parks through the center of town, that are maybe more of urbanized areas now that are, you know, mowed grass, things like that. So, our goal is to more, to incorporate more like a natural ecosystem, how that would function. So, you know, widening the channel, deeping the, deepening the center of the channel, and then, you know, adding, you know, things like wetland and riparian, well, not necessarily riparian, but wetland vegetation throughout that, so that it, it's more of a natural way of functioning.
One last question. Yeah. So, so on that, is, is, I mean, the numbers, the data, you know, calculating this all out, the science behind it, if you will? What about the practical? I guess the question is, what is there, has this been done somewhere else in your, that you guys can be aware of to, that's proven versus just off the numbers and data?
Yeah, there's, there's a few examples that I can think of in the, I guess, what I would say, the Upper Missouri River Basin, the Omaha District area. There's a project about, it's called the Chatfield Downstream Project on the South Platte River in Denver. It's about nine miles of river channel that has kind of benches. And because there's quite a bit of drop, there's a lot of grade control there too, but they, they have a flood control channel that's sort of naturalized. And then, we did a big, we're doing a big project that's in design right now with the city and county of Denver, that will widen some other reaches of the South Platte River to increase the amount of water that can, can be conveyed. But this then also incorporates some natural features and some recreation features. That's, those, those examples in Colorado are kind of much large-scale. We're doing a project that is just finishing construction in Randolph, Nebraska, that's on a pretty small stream, where we widened the channel, created kind of a bench, and then, a trapezoidal channel. And that project, you know, versus just being a narrow, narrow flood control channel carries a lot more, carries a lot more of the floodwaters. That's a lot smaller scale. So, Watertown's kind of in between in terms of scale. An example of one that's more recreation-focused would be one in downtown Lincoln, Antelope Creek. That's a flood control channel that goes right through the university campus and has trails and amphitheaters and reflecting pools and all kinds of recreation features built into it. But it's first and foremost a flood control channel, and it's functioned multiple times to provide flood damage protection to that part of the city of Lincoln. So, I'm an advocate for channels over levies, because levies tend to have life cycle costs that come back around 30, 40, 50 years down the road. And so, I think channels are a little bit cleaner, a little bit more compatible with the natural environment, a little bit easier to maintain. But, you know, that's kind of eye of the beholder personally.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you. Couple more questions, if I could. You know, when we talk about widening the channel, how does that affect floodway and floodplain areas? You know, people have properties, they want to add on, they want to build on that property. Is that going to have an, I would assume that would have an effect on more property being in that floodway floodplain area, I would think?
So, for the floodplain, since we'll be increasing conveyance, the assumption would be that the floodplain would either stay the same or slightly decrease. Now, that's dependent on if we're inducing flooding. If we are, then that might be different. For the floodway, be similar. If we're increasing capacity, there's a chance that it could decrease, but we'd have to go through a FEMA analysis to, to look at that.
Okay. But you don't see an effect on existing properties where suddenly, they would be a part of a floodway?
Not based on these designs. If that did happen, it would be more of a policy change from FEMA's guidance.
Okay. One other thing. What our plan, the plan that you've presented also has a sedimentation basin, is that correct? I think, which would benefit Lake Compesca, correct? And one of the things I think I heard was that you, that at some point, there'd be maintenance to that. There would have to be some means of cleaning that out over time. Any idea of what that would take, what, what costs might be associated with removing that sedimentation?
I think preliminary, we thought if you were to remove the sediment every 15 years, it'd be, I think, about $4 million.
Council, anything more? Councilman Danforth?
I got a whole bunch of questions. Yeah, I do. But first of all, I need some clarification on, on a question I think that Councilman Jones asked. Alternate 8, is that, does that include or not include the use of the lake as a bladder?
So, Alternative 8, as in the draft report, includes the lake. But right now, during optimization, I mean, for instance, us in Omaha, we're calling it 8B. I mean, it doesn't have a formal name, but we're running it without the lake, and we're running it with the detention basin.
Okay. And I, I apologize for this, because my, I've read a lot of stuff, I don't remember exactly where I read stuff. But did I read somewhere that the city supports Alternative 8? Have I read that in one of your reports or somebody's report?
So, the way, when we came up here, I think it was August or early September before the public meeting, we wanted to get your buy-in on releasing this, this alternative as a tentatively selected plan. And it's my understanding that that's what we received during that meeting.
Okay. So, you really haven't, that was for discussion purposes, not for city approval? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Because I, I could have swore I read that where the city approved it, or, or was in agreement with it. And I don't remember actually having that discussion. But, okay, so I got a, and these are kind of hodgepodge, so bear with me.
Councilman, can I, can I?
Yep.
Add one thing to that? So, one thing, as we're moving, as we move, assuming we move forward to a final report that we're going to submit for approval, in submitting that report for approval, one of the required elements that has to be in that package is a letter from the non-federal sponsor supporting the plan. So, when we get to final report, whatever we're recommending in that plan will, it will not get approved without a letter from the city supporting the plan. It will go on a shelf with no action. Nobody will review it. Like, I have projects that have sat at NWD where we completed the report, but there was no letter supporting it, so Northwestern Division could not take an action to re, to review it nor approve it, because that, that required element wasn't included.
Yeah, I can understand that, Greg. That's, that's...
So, there will be a point where the city will have to take an action on whether they want to support or not in a formal way.
Whatever the plan is.
But we haven't done that yet.
Right. Okay. So, who owns our lake? Who ultimately has the final say? I've always thought that the state of South Dakota controlled Lake Compesca through the GFP or something. Who's got the say? Who's got the say? I mean, so, it can't be, I'm sorry, gentlemen, it can't be us, because. I mean, so who, we could throw water on this thing, but who has the final say if that lake can be used as a bladder ultimately?
From our discussions with DNAR, from looking at the, the permits, we believe that FC3 permit grants the use for the city of Watertown to remove stoplogs and utilize the stoplog feature of the channel weir.
Is that the same as using the lake as a bladder? To me, I, that.
Yes.
It is, the same thing.
And the reason why is because removing those stoplogs controls the elevation of the lake.
And they're fine with that, the outcome of that?
Who do you mean by who?
The state. Whoever it is, what do you call it, the DNAR, they said, go, we like it.
So far, they agree with the analysis that FC3 grants that permission. They do want to see additional analysis moving forward to see if there would be water quality concerns if the lake is used as a bladder.
So where does that fit in this decision-making process? By this body over here that says, yeah, we like your plan, but they've got it, you called it the SD3, and it.
FC3.
Wow, my wife might be right. I can't hear. Now, FC3? All right, wow, all right, I'll write that down, we'll get that one. So, do you see where I'm coming from on this? Is you're, we're being asked a really difficult question, and I do agree with Councilman Beeler, as, man, we've went a long way on this thing, and you guys have put a lot of time, and there's a lot of money expended on this decades-long thing, and, and for us to continue to go forward, I think, for the most part, unless something comes up here, it is, it's just, unfortunately, it, it's probably an expenditure we got to go through, but, so kind of bear with me here a little bit. So, I think, Sarah, you had mentioned, and I'm kind of piggyback, Councilman, you said the river i, is going to get a little bit wider potentially, right, as far as the, but then we, did you say that the, we had to raise the levees by like .3 feet or something like that?
That's what our numbers are showing right now.
So what does that do? Then I think you said it lowers the economic value rating, right?
It, it lower, well, without lowering the lake, we lose benefits that we were getting from lowering the lake, and so, so our BCR is lower, it's below one.
So that's, that's affected by the lake more so than the height of the levees?
It's a combo. So you lose benefits from lowering the lake, but then you increase costs, I, you know, generally from raising the levy, because it's going to take more material. So if you don't, if you increase costs, in theory, you want to increase benefits, but we're not increasing benefits, we're only losing benefits. The benefits, like, they, we're losing just a little, and we're increasing the cost, so now your ratio falls below one.
Aren't they different? Aren't, isn't they, and I don't want to be argumentative here, but the, the construction is a one-time cost upfront, and then, then maintenance, right? Whereas the ongoing flood after flood after flood, we see an economic value there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Return. So it's a one-time sunk cost upfront for construction of the solution, whatever that is. But, but after that sunk cost is gone, and you're, you're having floods every two, three, five, 10 years, whatever that is, you've kind of recouped that through your savings, right? You don't have as much damage, otherwise, why did we do it?
I'll take a stab at this, even though I'm not an economist.
Speak very clearly, because I can't apparently.
So the way we, the way the Corps does economic benefit analysis is we look at the whole spectrum of flood events that could occur, common floods, rare floods. We compute the damages for each of those type of events, and we weight it by the probability of that event occurring, and then we aggregate it all down to an annual damage. And then we, on the cost side, we compute first-time capital cost and 50-year project life costs, including operation and maintenance, and we annualize the cost. And we look at that annual cost against how much of that annual damage does that project reduce? And those are the benefits. One of the things that is eroding our benefit-cost ratio when we get rid of the lake lowering and that kind of buffering effect, is these induced damage places, these 50 structures that are seeing higher floodwaters with the project than they would without it, that's increased damage. And so those damages are eroding our benefits. Now, we might be able to get some of that to go away with further optimization, but right now, it is undermining the benefit-cost ratio to some extent. We're also not getting as many benefits by not buffering the water. That's, that's causing a reduction in the benefit-cost ratio as well, but that, those induced flooding effects that are showing up in the modeling right now, and we've only, we've only started looking at this, so we, there's some refinement that needs to be done. That's something, like Sarah said, the, the Corps Office of Counsel attorneys look at that stuff pretty heavily. If you're, if we are, if we are increasing floodwaters on properties, one of the questions they ask is it properties that would have been flooded anyway, or is it properties that already are flooded, and are you changing the amount of flooding they see? And they take all that into consideration in terms of determining whether or not we have, I guess what I would call a take, where we're responsible for incorporating mitigating, mitigation of those impacts? Because in floodplain law, like, somebody can build a road, and it can change the water surface profile, and that's permissible under floodplain law, but the Corps doesn't permit itself to do some of that stuff. We, like, we look very hard at whether or not a project is going to cause increased flooding on, on certain, on other properties, and how much and how frequently, and we may conclude that we have to mitigate that, which we'll have to factor those costs in, and we haven't done that yet. We're still, we still got to work through that process. Does that help and explain the benefit-cost stuff?
It does, kind of. I mean, it's complicated, it is, and we got a lot, not a word to go. Sarah, good question, when you said it would not, by not using the lake, we would not meet the one, 1.0?
Benefit-cost ratio.
Yep, yep. If you, you suggested that we may need to widen the channel, or not the channel, the, the levees area, the river, may have to raise them. And, and by doing that, we aren't attaining, because of the cost, we aren't attaining the 1.0, correct?
Right.
By how much?
Right now, we are at .75, but we think it would go down, because we haven't fact, we haven't.
Down good or down bad?
Down bad.
Down's bad.
Yeah. One is, one and above is good. Yeah, under one's bad.
Okay. If we were to widen the river channel, not, again, I keep using channel, that's not correct, maybe it's not, the, the river, would that require land acquisition to accomplish that, or is that in right-of-way areas right now?
I'm trying to think of where all it is. A lot of it's in the park, and we factored that already into the real estate plan and what we would need, and it's calculated into the cost currently.
Even if we have to?
If you got to go a little farther, then, yeah, we'll calculate that as well, but.
You've, you've mentioned that you believe that 52 structures potentially would be affected or could be affected by this. Can we get a pictorial at some point, and a list of those?
Yeah.
52 structures or properties, whatever that is, so we can see what it is that, that is creating that issue, or that, that concern?
Yeah.
Versus just the number?
Yep.
Let's see here. One other question, and I know this is, and I got a few other ones here, but I, one of the things I know that had come up in the past, is the, the water flow through town and how that gets stopped, or, or it gets slowed down per se, because of the various bridges we have in town. There's only so much capacity, it's going to go under those bridges, otherwise, it got to go up and over, right? Do we know what that amount of water is, and what, to what extent are, are bridges creating some of this problem?
Actually, we, we looked at widening bridges as a potential measure, and we weren't finding a lot of difference. I don't know, Jeff, if you have a different?
So when we look at the channel capacity, we usually look at the slope of the channel, and with the Big Sioux River, there's just not a lot of slope, so it's slow-moving water, and you see that with the floods. Because it's slow-moving water, the bridges don't act like a large constriction, so if we, even if we widen it, increase a lot of cost, we're not going to get a lot of benefits by lowering that water surface at each of those bridges. The water's just moving too slow. We're trying to push this very large wedge of water through town, and that is affected more by the slope of the river rather than the size of the bridges.
Okay. Let me see, I know I got a couple other questions here. Sarah, I think you mentioned that there were those that live along Sixth Street that are not in favor of a levy.
Correct.
And I went on my phone, and I found those, and I believe that's along the 13 town homes, twin homes, that are along the railroad tracks, correct, right along the river?
Yes.
What do we do in scenarios like that? Would the levy be on their property? Would it be on the state or city's property?
I'm trying to remember exactly where the property line is. The issue is that there's already, the trees that are there closer to the river, technically, they're in the floodway, and working with Brandy, they're really not supposed to be there, doesn't help your flood issue, so, and, yes, when we build a, you know, a levy, we can't have woody debris on that either, that compromises the levy.
So is there concern, the removal of the trees, or is it, gee, they want to look down and, and see the river?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll give up for now, ma'am, thank you.
And Councilman Jones has been waiting, though. Then I'll get to you. Councilman Jones?
So, I'd like to go back to the numerous comments that you got back after the presentation of alternative eight, dropping Lake Compesca down 30% of the time. We, we're getting the same feedback, so it's like, how, how can we figure out a way? Have, I mean, that's kind of where I'm headed here. Have you done, have you guys allowed a second opinion? Have you done a second opinion on the 52 structures, which basically throws the cost-benefit analysis off the one-to-one? Where can we go? I mean, what can we do so that it, that, that, that we know the numbers are correct? Because dropping that lake just invites that much more so-called dirty water into that lake every spring, and, I mean, for the number of years and the millions of dollars, that has not slowed down yet. And so, I know you're not here for water quality, but we have to live on that lake, and residents have been on that lake for 50, and their relatives are there for 100, and the last thing we want is more dirty water. It's being disguised right now by, by zebra muscles, so it, it, we know it's still coming in there, but, you know, where, again, back to, is there a second opinion? Are, are we allowed, are you allowed to go out and get second opinions from another engineering company? Are we using RESPECT's numbers to, to analyze this?
So, I'm trying to think if I can get all the questions. As far as a second opinion, that's what all that, those comment periods were, so that external peer review that we got back, and we only got 12 comments, and there wasn't any, you know, major comments that are significant that went against what we're recommending. The, the issue is, and the history is that, you know, dating back even to the 94 report, that BCR with the dam was barely over one as well, and I don't think the other ones were, they might have been close or under. And then, you know, I can speak to all of the alternatives that we've bran over the last two years, not many have been over one, and we've tried a lot of different combinations to try and get it over one. And you can see even the final array of alternatives in the report, I think only two, you know, were above one. And so, it's just, it's just challenging, I think there's just not, you know, how costly some of these alternatives are going to be in order to provide protection, it's just hard to get the benefits to balance it out. So, it's not that, it's not that you can't, you know, we've offered up the idea, you know, we ran it without lake lowering to double-check, and we're still getting below one, just like on all the other rounds we've ran, you know, in the past year. And so, you know, we can go forward and try and get those waivers, you know, that would maybe allow us to recommend a plan that isn't necessarily the plan that has a BCR above one. We just can't guarantee that that's going to get approved. But we certainly can, can run that and submit that and see if it will, and, and, you know, work together to justify it.
So I'm with the rest of the council, and maybe with the whole city. Other than, you know, a, a few that have raised their opinion, I thought maybe in your comments period, you had received a lot of, hey, please don't lower our lake to invite more water in.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, you did, and we did.
You know, my, my question really had to be is, I have a little bit of a history in cost-benefit analysis. Just dropping that to .75 that quickly had a lot to do then, are, are you saying it had a lot to do with those 52 structures? Maybe it only had another inch, maybe it had six inches of more water? That's what I was referring to, is getting a second opinion. I mean, there's an engineer that said, if we do this, if we don't dilate Compesca by this amount before the, the, the high water comes, that we're going to flood 52 structures. Is that the, really, the only cost that you, that you associated with it, that dropped that cost-benefit analysis so far?
The reason lowering the lake works is because we aren't associating a cost with lowering the lake. There's a cost with building a levy, there's a cost with widening the channel, there's a cost with the flood wall. We don't, we don't see a cost in an already-existing weir where we're going to remove the stoplog. And even if it was minimal costs, you know, it, it's not going to change that much, but you get benefits out of that, so that's what is helping our numbers.
Well, those of us that have lived on the lake can see the cost of that.
And so we do agree, and one thing I want to add too, is, is if you drop the lake, if you lower it that .8 feet, you're also dropping that water elevation that's in the marsh outside that lake. If you do that, you gain 76 acre feet of storage in that marsh. Now, sounds like a small amount, but some of the comments that we've had has talked about how the dirtiest water is always that first flush, right? So, if we have that 76 additional acre feet, if we have a flow of 1,000 CFS coming down the Big Sioux River, or Mud Creek, whichever, or a combination of the both, it would take an additional hour to fill up the marsh before it would overtop the sediment weir and get into the lake. So now you're gaining an additional hour where the marsh is getting filled up, where that water's getting passed downstream, where that dirty first flush water is not going into the lake. Then after that, you're correct, the sedimentation weir would be overtop, the rest of the water would go in, but the dirtiest water, that first flush, takes an additional hour. You gain that benefit to the lake, where that's not making it into the lake anymore, it's either dropping out in the marsh or continuing downstream.
Can I just correct a comment that I made? It's not only the people at the lake that would benefit from the increase in sediment and the increase in. from the increase in sediment and the increase in dirty water, but I think the whole city of Watertown and anyone else from the region and and travelers that come in would also benefit from it all, so. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Beeler?
A real easy question. The riparian efforts that we may need to implement in this project, who would pay for that typically?
They're factored in the mitigation, and they're factored in that total cost in the report. So the the twenty-two million, it's factored in that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Chetty?
Thank you. Yeah, just one follow-up question on those fifty-two structures. I believe, if I heard correctly, it was mentioned that if we did, if we didn't do the lake lowering and just did the widening, they they would be affected more without lowering the lake. If we did nothing with the lake, they would be affected more, so is that correct?
So the way it's, the alternative is currently designed, and all we do is remove lowering of the lake, that's when we see the induced damages.
Worst damage than what they had bef, would have had without widening the lake, the river, I mean, and?
Without doing anything, yeah. Without, so. So Alternative Eight includes lowering the lake, a levy on the east bank and a flood wall, and then widening of the channel south of two twelve. If all we do is remove lowering of the lake, that's when we see those induced damages. And we were, we ran into this issue before we even released the draft report, is we kept finding alternatives. And we were trying, when we get to those higher flood events, we were seeing induced damages downstream. And so that's where we were trying to, you know, if it's, you know, lowering the lake a little bit more or widening the channel or things like that, trying to sort out, how can we mitigate that?
Okay. Well, yeah, and, you know, in agreement with others around this council and with with what you guys are proposing to here, that, you know, it's, I guess it's never easy. Have you ever had a project that's just easy peasy? Probably not.
No.
It's, it's, this is, this isn't anything new, I'm sure. So, I mean, I see the the need to continue to. I'm glad we're having these questions tonight. I'm glad we're working through this. And hopefully, we can, just hopefully, there's some way we can get through this and come up with a with a with a benefit cost analysis ratio and 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 for the betterment of the city to get, but we gotta go through this process to get there, so. Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
In theory, in theory, the Mahoney Creek Dam's off the off the the option list, correct?
Yes.
In theory, based on public interest, the the lake being used as a bladder is off the off the table, from the public's perspective, okay? Could I, I see no support for that. So here's my question. We're looking at approving additional dollars for some additional study work to be completed. What are, what's our objective? What's our 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 goal with that? And is it realistically, is it realistic that the outcome is going to give us a a cost benefit that enables us to get the funding that we need? Or are we just pushing a rope up a hill here? I I don't want to spend the money if you're going to come back and go, we're not going to get the one point oh anyway.
You're you're asking if if we can keep kind of changing the alternative to see if we can get a one BCR without lowering the lake? Is that what I'm?
But what I'm saying is, let's just, for sake of argument, sake of discussion.
Okay.
No dam and no bladder use of the lake, okay? Off the table.
Okay.
What's the likelihood that no matter how much time and effort that you put into this thing, that you're going to be able to get a one point zero or greater cost benefit ratio that would enable us to get the funding? And and whatever that division, that that cost share is that we would be able to afford? Okay, so what's the likelihood that we're going to have you guys come back? We're going to expend this extra eight hundred thousand or wherever that number is. And then you're going to come back in three, six, eight months, whatever that is, and you're going to say, well, we looked at this, this, and this, and it's, we're just not getting to the one point zero.
Well, and I think some, before I hand over to Greg, I think something else to keep in mind is, you know, we're trying to design an alternative that protects to the one percent event. And so that, that's also, I mean, we could design something that only protected to maybe a twenty-year event or something, and you could get a BCR of one. But I, you know, in talking with everyone and the feedback we received, the goal is, you know, to 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 get protection to the one percent, if not more. So that, that's also, you know, trying to get these things to work out.
Have we raised the bar too high? I mean, what's the proba, a probability of that? So if, so if I, I'm going to try to qualify this thing in my own brain here. The the flood we had of ninety-six, ninety-seven, so it's bringing ninety-seven. Is that in that one percent that you're talking about? Or is that, is is the one percent even higher than that?
The one percent's higher than that.
Okay, so are we trying to design something that we just can't get to? Because of the boogeyman theory, so to speak? Do we need to lower our bar and deal with the?
This is why this is so hard. I'll give it to Greg and Jeff, because I think there's other components and other. If you get to the one percent event, you know, that that allows for other things. And the things that I'm thinking of are things associated with FEMA. So I don't know, I'll hand it to Jeff and Greg.
So I would say, no, you have not set the bar too high. And the reason why is when we look at the levy heights, although we are looking at trying to protect to the one percent, we're also trying to to design a levy that reaches the roadway height, that doesn't require closure structures. There's, there's a lot of other factors that go into this levy height. So this height of the levy actually makes sense to what you should design to. It's not a setting the bar too high. As far as one percent protection, although the levy could protect against, although the levy is designed to protect against the one percent, FEMA accreditation is different than core. So there is still additional things that will go into the FEMA accreditation to say, yes, this levy meets FEMA standards. Our hope is that it will, but that's still a process to go through.
Are you saying?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Jeff, are you saying that you guys could come up with a plan? We could love it. But FEMA might say, no, it's got to go here? Or or is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing? Or is it FEMA standard or is on average lower than yours? Where does that go?
Usually, the core standards are a little bit higher. So when we talk about discharges, when we talk about water surface elevations, the expectation is that the core standard is going to be a little bit higher. FEMA standards are going to be a little bit lower. The problem is, is this is such a complicated situation that we can't just say we have a levy height plus three feet of freeboard. And we've gone away from that with the current criteria of how to establish levy cri, levy accreditation anyway. So we just can't say for certain what FEMA is going to decide. That's that's up to FEMA.
I'd like to say this is my last question, but it's highly likely it's not. Go ahead, Greg.
One, I was going to piggyback on what Jeff said, and then I was going to, I was going to touch on the likelihood of budgeting thing that you brought up earlier, if if you bear with me for a minute. But on the FEMA thing, one thing I would piggyback on what Jeff said, we have done some some coordination with FEMA on technical aspects of our modeling to try and synchronize with the map updates that are going on in the city so that that ends up being more in alignment, I guess I would say. And so we did do, you guys did do a technical meeting with them here, I don't know, a month or so ago. Yeah. On the budget piece, so we do have, we have policy that allows us to select plans that have BC ratios lower than one. We didn't use to have that. That is something that came about under the current, well, actually, under Assistant Secretary of the Army, Artie James. He was under the Trump administration the first time. He basically said, hey, Corps of Engineers, when you formulate and evaluate plans, you're not looking at the entire comprehensive breadth of benefits that those plans provide. You're focusing way too much on just benefit, strict benefit cost ratio. So he directed us to look at, you know, what's, what's it do for quality of life? What's it do for water quality? What's it do for the environment? What's it do for safety? You know, all of those aspects that are important to community. I guess I use the term community cohesion, community health. We're supposed to incorporate that in our decision-making. On most projects, telling that story is basically, hey, I've got a project that's got a one point two BC ratio, and it does all these other great and wonderful things. So it's, it deserves consideration for funding. But there are projects that have been approved and a few projects in other parts of the country where the benefit cost ratio was less than one. But all the great and wonderful things that it does to, that are also good for the community carries it over the finish line to an approved plan that becomes a budgetal, budgetable. So it's doable. It is not, we aren't plowing new ground in terms of this would be the first time it's ever been done, but it's not common. So we would need the community's help, we would need the council's help, the engineering department, public works' help. And like, what are the things that the project contributes to the community that we might not be able to quantify in dollars and cents but are really important things to consider? So it could be some of the disadvantaged community neighborhoods. It could be access to the hospital and healthcare from one side of the river or the other. It could be, you know, those kinds of safety things and those kinds of things. Maybe it's the water quality considerations at the lake. So I, I, it's definitely the kind of things that we would be looking to do over the next six months if we go forward and we're and we're taking Lake Lowering off the table. And so we're trying to figure out what's our plan that doesn't involve Lake Lowering? That's the best plan for the community. And we would, we would want to work with with you all to figure out how to shape that.
And we can come up with that into a very nice presentation that will, should work for you. I'm I'm confident, but. So a couple of questions. If you were to, if you were to leave here today, and we said, go for it, and we and we approved the funding, have you had discussions that said, okay, here's what we're going to do? We're going to do this, 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 and this, and that's going to get us, move us down, you know, move the ball a little ways? Are there options that you're looking at that we haven't discussed? That, where do you go from your end to 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 assist us in trying to find a solution that is is supportable?
Uh, sure. So, uh, got my next PDT meeting on Thursday. So the plan, if if you told us today to go forth and no longer pursue, you know, the alternative with lowering the lake, pursue this waiver that Greg was just mentioning, then we would start updating the hydraulic model, which we already have. We would, we're definitely looking at that sediment detention upstream. So we need to move forward in designing that. We need to do a sediment analysis. We've been factoring that in, but I've been holding off, waiting for, to see if there's approval tonight. We would start the risk assessment on the levy in January. We would do, where we do a kickoff meeting, then we do a full day assessment with the H and H engineers, the geotechnical engineers, levy safety, economics, and look at all the different parts of this levy and make sure that, you know, we're recommending something that's good. We would be updating the draft report and all the appendices that I'm sure you guys read through based on all the two hundred and fifty comments and updating with the new plan that we're recommending. And then hopefully, by May, we would have all those things done because on June eighteenth, we have to meet another milestone for the study, which is the agency decision milestone. And we would be presenting a plan to, you know, our folks at headquarters and our division and policy and and get their approval forward. But before that, I'm sure in May, then we could come back, you know, and and go over where we're at. And hopefully, by then, too, we would, you know, the goal is hopefully to have that waiver. But, you know, we just don't know when that's going to happen. And so then the next final phase would be releasing the final report in, I believe, it's late October. And then that gets routed to our division, which is out of, our Northwestern Division, which is out of Portland. And then that goes up to the folks at headquarters in DC and then results in a chief's report in May of twenty twenty-six.
If you had to make a bet today, guesstimate, what would you, what would your probability be that after this is all said and done, and I'd like to say the dust settles, but let's just say water under the bridge? What's the probability that we're going to have a project that is going to be acceptable and affordable and funded? I know that's a, that's a horrible question, but that's really where I'm at, is what's the probability of that?
Chris, do you want to add on, add on to that one? Okay, that's separate, okay.
Greg was around during ninety-four reports, so he would have better, better idea.
I would say through, I feel reasonably confident through core channels that we can navigate the waiver process and come up with a with a report recommending a plan that'll work for the city and get it through the chief of engineers and get it approved next, you know, next spring or next summer of twenty-six. The 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 big hurdle probably comes after that. Chief of Engineers' report goes back to Congress for Congress to decide if they want to authorize that project in the Next Water Resource Development Act, which actually, coincidentally, will likely be twenty twenty-six, because they happen on even years typically. How Office of Management and Budget, who kind of happens to be the gatekeepers of those reports as they work their way from the Corps and the Assistant Secretary's office into the congressional authorization? It, it's hard to say whether or not they'll have, whether they'll endorse it. They have a tendency to not endorse plans unless the benefit cost ratio is above three to one, which a lot of Corps of Engineers' projects aren't above three to one. They're in the one and a half to two and a half range a lot of times. So then it's, it it gets over into Worda. Congress takes an action on if they're going to authorize it or not, and then Congress has to decide if they're going to appropriate it. I think it will take, it will likely take congressional, you know, little tush push from the Philadelphia Eagles to get it over the finish line, is what I'm guessing. Not an Eagles fan, but it just seemed like the analogy that came to mind. I think, I I, I would bet it'll take some congressional assistance to get it there in the end. And then, you know, one thing that the Corps does is once, once they have, in recent years, adopted a philosophy that once, once there is money to start something, they'll figure out how to finish it. And so it'll likely be that first, how do you get, how do you get it started? And then, once the ball's rolling, I would like to believe it'll, it'll, it'll end up getting finished. But, you know, it's, one step at a time, I guess I would recommend, is get the analysis done, work the waiver process. If the waiver process comes out favorably, the report's going to get approved. Like, they wouldn't grant us a waiver if they weren't leaning towards approving the report, if that, if that makes sense.
All right. Then I'm, I'm going to ask one more question, and then I'll allow Councilman Beeler to step in here. But is your department working on a plan or a review or a study to release water out of Bitter Lake up north? Someone is, from what I understand. Is that correct?
We are working with Day County on a Section Twenty-two study. It's a technical assistance to to study. It's not a feasibility study. It's technical assistance only. We are working on investigating what are the options? What would it look like technically? Impact-wise? Like, what would it take to lower Bitter Lake? I personally think it's the only option's pumping. I don't think there's a gravity option. We aren't very far into that analysis. It will include impacts to recreation, it'll include impacts to fish and wildlife resources at the lakes. It'll include impacts to downstream. You know, depending on how much water we're looking at at releasing. But it's, it is in the pretty early stages, and it's looking at, at releasing. But it's, it is in the pretty early stages and it's focused mostly on actually, what would it take to do it? And how often would you have to do it? Like if you lowered it, let's say 10 feet, how long does it take for those lakes to come back where you'd have to, where you'd have to do it again? And I don't think anybody really knows that yet. So we're still kind of in the hydrology and data gathering. We haven't really started looking at any alternatives or any of the impact analysis yet.
Well, Greg, how does that potentially impact Watertown and this whole, you know, we, to be honest, if any more water than norm, normally or naturally comes down from the north, kind of sends us into a tailspin. How does something like that, because my understanding is to divert it, get it pushed in some manner over to the Sioux River, correct? And if that's correct, that's what I've heard. If that's correct, how does that not have an adverse effect on Watertown in our situation?
So there's, there's two potential options of where you could send it. You could send it to the James or you could send it to the Big Sioux. In either instance, we would be looking very hard at what's the rate that we're putting water in. So like if I'm putting in five CFS, which five cubic feet per second is not a lot of water, but it's a lot of gallons per minute. I mean, in terms of pumping, we would have to evaluate, you know, what that, what that increase has in terms of effects going downstream. I would not expect that we're looking at large volumes. I think they're going to be very small rates of, of transfer over long durations is kind of what I would expect. But I, but I, like, we're not very far. So like, we would have to measure those effects. And certainly, we would be in communication with the county and the city both along the way. But that, there is a study that is going on to just look at what the options might be. It is technical assistance only. There is not a path forward under that program for Corps of Engineers assistance with design or construction. So it's just, it's just looking at technical analysis of what that, what that would look like and, and what the options might be and what the impacts might be as well. Because there certainly would be, if you lowered Bitter Lake by 10 feet, the impacts on the lake resources itself would be pretty significant as well from a fisheries and environmental standpoint. So, you know, though, all of that is being taken into consideration and we're, but we're just, it's pretty early on right now. We just did data collection this last summer. We're doing hydrology right now and then we'll be, and then we'll get into more along the way.
Councilman Buhler?
Thank you. Good questions, Mike. Very good questions. Anyway, a couple of things. Just, who does the work? Who does the construction of the levy? The, who would do that?
It'd be a contract. We, it wouldn't be us.
But you, who selects the, the contractors that would do that work?
Oh, it, it would go through our office.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just another question. I, we talked a little bit, not to dwell on sedimentation, that basin, but, you know, that, if, that works out to about $267,000 a year for us if we maintain that. Are there any external funding sources available for something like that, for that maintenance that you're aware of?
Not through us that I can think of. There might be through like an NRCS or somebody because they do soil conservation. They might, they may have resources in terms of some of their grant, their grant programs. EPA perhaps as well, because of their water quality charge with 319 program, they, you may be able to use 319 grants. If you can draw the connection where main, where, I should, I should be on here. You might be able to draw some, some connections to these programs that are administered by other federal agencies. EPA Water Quality Program, you might be able to, you know, make the case that I need to maintain this sediment trap because if I don't, it adversely impacts water quality. So there might be, there might be an avenue there. There might be an avenue through NRCS. Those are the two that I can think of on the surface, but there might be, there might be some NGOs or something out there too, potentially nonprofits. I don't, I don't know.
Follow up, Mayor. What do they do with that sedimentation? Where do they distribute that once they take it out of there typically?
It would kind of depend on the type of material and, and what its chemical composition is as to whether there's any constraints on what you can use it for. But I would think you could probably use it probably for random fill. You might be able to, you might be able to, but it would, it would just kind of depend on what its, what its composition is. If it's really sandy, I would guess most of the farmers aren't going to want it in terms of, but like in other places where we've done excavation, the surrounding farmers have wanted, they've wanted that spoil material because they, that would, they could regrade some of their fields or whatever. But it just kind of depends on what its composition is and whether or not there would be any chemical constituents to it that would constrain what you can use it for. But I would think the rural basin, it, it's, it might be, it might be something that has a lot of potential reuse opportunities.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
About done. Just to follow up to something. Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up. Greg, thanks for your years of experience, 1994 and before. And if there's anyone that understands things in this area, it'd be you. I do like your comments that things should, we hope go the right way. And this gets approved. When you say that, does that include manipulating Lake Compeska in that?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I think you could, you could get it, you could get it approved either way. If you, if you lower Lake Compeska, the plan has got a benefit cost ratio above one. So the, the path is going to be pretty clear. If we look at the alternatives that don't include lowering it, we've got to go through the waiver process and tell the story. But, but I think, I think we can, with your assistance, I think we can tell that story. And, and we can work the, I guess, socializing that waiver in the next couple of months and kind of see what direction it's, the winds blowing, you know, in terms of the vertical chain up the Corps. And then we can kind of see how that plays out. But I, I am, I'm working that, I've worked something similar on another project. And, and so I, I feel like we, we have the right information. We just need to package it and, and maybe add a few things with some help from the city.
You, you struck a chord with the head of the Corps that was appointed six, eight years ago. And understanding the environmental side of it, and that's when I started thinking of the environmental side of Lake Compeska and what it does for the region and what it is such a huge asset to Watertown. And, you know, not taking that into consideration would be interesting, but I, I understand the political side too. It's going to take the right people with the right information to get it done. Thank you for tonight.
Any further questions for the Corps? Councilman Buhler?
Just a comment. Thanks again, folks, for all your good work and for taking the time, making the trip and helping us with the questions we have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Anything more for the Corps? All right. Thank you. I see we have former city councilman and the Lake Compeska Watershed Protection District, some kind of officer, vice president in the background, Mr. Johnson, would you like to address the council on this?
I don't think you're on.
Oh, there we go. Brad Johnson, former council member and current vice president of the Lake Compeska Water Project District. I'll be brief with my comments tonight. I'm, I'm encouraged that the Corps is finally providing an alternative that doesn't include lowering Lake Compeska because we, we are, the Lake District is vehemently opposed to that option. And I would, in, in the event that that's not part of it, I would encourage the council to go ahead and proceed with the, the rest of the funding. But I did want to push back on Sarah's comments a little bit, that they hadn't gotten any, any feedback opposing their, their, their plan before. Because Lake Compeska Water Project District hired Respec Engineering to do an analysis of, of, of the Corps' proposal on lowering the lake. And I just want to read the conclusion of that. And it said, based on our review and analysis, we recommend that the City of Watertown and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer reevaluate and reconsider the proposed seasonal lowering of Lake Compeska to 1718.0 feet as part of the TSP tentatively selected plan. Reliably lowering the lake to an elevation of 1718 as proposed is impractical. No serious analysis of the potential for adverse water quality impacts to Lake Compeska has been performed. There are considerable costs associated with the plan that have not been accounted for, and assumptions used of the hydraulic logic and hydraulic modeling appear to be flawed. Respec Engineering is a company that, that developed the Big Sioux Flood Information System, which the state of South Dakota, when I was chairman of the State Water Board, spent a million dollars to develop that as the best flood model that was out there up to this point. And so, you know, we believe that there are costs to manipulating the lake. And, and I just want to make, and this is a few comments that the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources made to the Corps considering that, you know. And so the diversion structure at the entrance to Lake Compeska was built by the city council and when I was on the council. And, and we had to go to the Water Management Board to get approval for that. And, and we did all the research into why that structure was needed. And this is with the conclusion, and this is in the Dana's response to the Corps. It says, the Water Management Board found that sedimentation and adverse water quality effects from the inflow of the Big Sioux River water into Lake Compeska constitutes a serious threat to the viability of Lake Compeska as a desirable resort, public resource. The board found that during early stages of flood event, a large portion of sediment is transported when the water quality of the river is at its porous condition, carrying that sediment. It also said, alternative eight for seasonal lowering of Lake Compeska to provide flood retention for when the Big Sioux River is flooding is counter to the intention of the flood control permit number FC 29-3 to keep the Big Sioux River water from entering the lake. And finally, it says, estimating the potential load to the lake for both nutrient and sediment during the flood event and how that will impact the water quality of the lake long-term is a significant issue that needs to be addressed in the report. I bring this up because they said that there was, it was a no-cost alternative. And there are costs because changing any of the flood control permits is required to go before the State Water Management Board. And the City of Watertown would have to be the applicant to change those flood control permits. And those are contested case hearings. And most likely, you would have the Lake Compeska Water Project District on the other side, along with Lake Pelican and others in that contested hearing. Attorneys are involved. There's lots of engineering costs, so it becomes expensive. So that's one cost. Another cost is the cost of pollution of that sediment coming into the lake. Now, the Lake Compeska Water District, through its engineers, has done a lot of analysis into how much sediment comes in as part of this flood control effort. We have information available with the cost to remove that is. We're more than happy to allow Respec to work with the Corps on analyzing those costs. And perhaps we can change that. And one more point I want to make is that they talk about 3,300 acre feet of water, making such a huge difference in the economics of their analysis. And so, you know, in, in 1997, that 3,300 acre feet of water was gone in less than a day. It was six days later when the, when the river peaked going through Watertown. And so, when you build a flood system through a town, you have to build it to a peak event. And so that 3,300 feet is long gone and your peak is still coming up. So it's hard for me to follow the logic of, of how, you know, that 3,300 acre feet is going to make a big difference in what the peak of the dikes are coming through town. But that's getting the technical part of things. But back 30 years ago, when I first started getting involved with this, it was the rich people at Lake Compeska against the poor people up north, poor farmers up north, taking their land. And now it seems to be the people at Lake Compeska standing in the way of flood protection for the City of Watertown. It's really an unfortunate position for the people of Lake Compeska to be in the middle either direction. We want to help. We want to be part of the solution. We're offering Respec Engineering to help the Corps. We'd love to be a partner. We've been kept at arm's length by the city, more of as an adversary as opposed to a partner. You're the project sponsor. We can't talk to the Corps. Our engineers can't talk to the Corps because the city, we have to go through the city and we've not been encouraged to do that and to let our engineers help you. We're willing to spend money to help the Corps relook at their economic analysis because I really have a hard time figuring out how 30%, almost 30% difference between 3,300 acre feet of water dropping the bucket in a flood. I mean, they're talking about a flood order of magnitudes beyond 1997. And so 3,300 acre feet in 1998 was a 98,000, or 1997 was a 98,000 acre feet of water came down that river. So, you know, there are a lot of logical questions that I'd like to have our engineers be part of. But we need city permission. We need you to want us to help. We want to help. We need to solve this problem. I spent eight years at your side up here trying to solve the problem. I know how hard it is. So we want to be a partner. We want to provide what resources we can help. We've got money to do it. We've got a great engineering firm that's got probably the most knowledge in South Dakota about all of this. And so, you know, as long as Lake Compeska is not, you know, the target of, of, of having to be lowered as part of all these flood alternatives, we're all on board. And I think I would encourage you to proceed to the end with this study because to stop now is, is not, not appropriate. But if the lake is going to be a target, then there's probably a potential fight in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson?
All right. There are no, no opposition. Let's vote on this. Motion will be to approve the project budget and to authorize the finance officer to issue a special check. So, Finance Officer Bob Zine, did you have a question?
I was just getting ready to.
Okay.
Full responsibility for the cost.
So the question is, are we assuming full responsibility for the cost? Because we can't automatically guarantee that the D A N R matches.
Yep.
Okay. So the motion, is there any question on the motion? All right. All those in favor of, of approving the budget and the issuance of a special check will say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. And I did see that, I think Councilman Peters is off.
Yes, Councilman Peters had to go.
So he will not have roll call. Okay. Shadi?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Buhler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 9B. Thank you. You can go watch the Vikings game now. We will however, be catching it on tape. 9B, item 9B is an approval of a cost transfer number 13 with Rice Lake within the GMP for the wastewater collection system and treatment facilities improvements in the amount of roughly $466,000. amount of roughly $466,000. City Attorney Peterson. Oh, sorry, City Engineer Peterson. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the wastewater treatment facility project and, and collection system project that, that we've been working on. We, we've been working with Rice Lake to, to include some lift station work. We have, there's 23 total lift stations, and we have worked for about, about 12 of them. And this cost transfer is to do the, the six most pressing needs at this point. And what, what we're doing, it's all within the, the GMP. We've been working with Rice Lake to do some valley engineering, and we found low over a million dollars through some various changes that, that we're doing. And we feel comfortable moving forward with this lift station work. It's the stations 3, 8, 9, 10, 15, and 22. I guess with that, I'll stand by with any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the cost transfer. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Buellers. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Jerrance. Any questions or comments? Councilman Danforth.
If I understand this correctly, what we're doing, this is within the confines of the project. We're just moving it from a holding account, per se, into a payment account. Is that fair?
Yes, I want to make that clear. It's all, it's all part of the GMP. It's all part of the project cost right now. We're just transferring funds.
Any other questions, comments? All right, since that was more just a procedural question, I feel comfortable just going to a voice vote unless there's any opposition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 9C is an authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check in the amount of $76,000 to gray construction for the 2023 airport T-hanger replacement. City Engineer Peterson.
Yes, this is a, a regular payment for, for the project out at the airport. Just didn't get it into financing time, so we're looking for issue of the special check.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the issuance. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any questions or comments? Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got one general question because I know that as we look farther down the road into some of our longer-term capital planning, there was some expansion in there, I believe, on, on airport hangars. But what value is there to us to, because it's at our cost, at least most of that is our cost? What, where's the, what's the value to the city to put up more hangars? It can't be in the lease amount because it really, really doesn't pay for the cost of the construction. What, what is the value to the city?
I think I'll defer to Ian on that question.
Sarah wasn't quite expecting to answer this question tonight. However, so new, the T-hangers that were there were just the replacement for, and we're talking about the new ones being built, correct? For what was blown down by that storm. We did receive funds from FEMA, which we'll talk about another point. But the benefit to the city is drawing in more people, more aviators, and growing our GA community. Which in turn adds more economic impact, so on and so forth. So it's not just about the lease, lease rates, which we can talk about getting into fair market value, but it's wide-ranging.
Any further questions or comments? All right. We'll do a voice vote on that one. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll. If you're in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. On to item 9D, an approval of the professional services agreement between the City of Watertown and Dependable Sanitation Incorporated. Go to our interim city manager, Bob Zine.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try my hand at this. I know Scott and Heath are both not here, so essentially, this is to, we currently are in a contract with Dependable Sanitation, and this is to enter into another five-year contract. They handle the receiving and the processing of our recyclables that are picked up. So everything's kind of in order. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Jerrance, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Let's open it up for questions or comments.
Is there anyone else real, Watertown? Pretty easy.
And so explain why we don't have our own people doing this?
I think a little bit of it is just the cost. It's quite costly to kind of sort out the recyclables and then to process them that way. So we do, we handle the pickup, but then they do kind of the sorting and the processing.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Shuddy?
Just a quick story on this subject. I went over to Dependable Sanitation one time to drop boxes off, and they were going through all this recyclable stuff by hand. There was guys lined up, and they were going through it all. And it was like 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, and I heard the one guy up there going through it, and he goes, "Ah, this is a good day. It's going to be a good day." And he was, he was, he's going through garbage recyclable stuff. And just was interesting to see his perspective on this as he was going through other people's stuff. And he was like, "It's a good day." Just a fun little fact on, that was kind of a hats off to Dependable Sanitation and their crew, just on a particular moment.
All right. Well, it's a good night, Councilman. So if you are in favor of the agreement, you're going to say aye. Opposed, say nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9E is an approval of the contractual agreement between Blue Peak and the City of Watertown for telecom services. ICM, Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, the city currently does use Blue Peak for all of our voice messaging and phone service. Essentially, the contract was coming up. We had kind of in the budget process looked at switching or if we were going to go with a different route. Our IT director did reach out and kind of have a conversation and looked for a little bit of a better price. And you can see that he did, he did receive that. So this one before you sets it for three years at the, basically about 15 bucks a line. So I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to do a shout-out to our IT director, Peter Boyle. He basically just took it upon himself to go forward and ask for a better rate, and he got it. So I would like to commend him for looking out for the best interest of the city, which also ended up being good for Blue Peak. So both sides are happy. It's a win-win for Watertown. I like, I just want to point out to everyone that he did a great job in, in asking for this and, and getting it for the city. So can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Open it up for any other questions or comments. All right, we're just going to do a voice vote, or if you're in favor of the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance establishing the zoning designation of I-1 light industrial district for the property, property to be known as J.C. Hopper First Edition. Community Development Manager, Han.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just the first reading, and...
You went out on us.
Oh.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this is just the first reading for, now we are looking at the, this will be the annexation and zoning. So the zoning is in front of you because it's an ordinance, so it needs two readings. And this is for the property at just south of 14th Avenue Northwest and then north of Highway 20. And it's an existing, here, I'll pull up the map. We don't want that. Okay, yeah. So this is the, the strip of land that will be annexed and zoned as I-1 light industrial. And then it'll be replanted with the adjacent property that you can see. It'll be in the subsequent action for the rezone of the property to the west there under the same ownership so that it will meet minimum lot size requirements in the I-1 district. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Manager Han. Can I, oh, this is just first reading, no motion required. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Councilman Jerrance.
Any neighbors opposing?
There were questions, but otherwise, no opposition.
Any further questions? All right, we'll see you back next time. You're going to stay up there at the mic for the item 10B, a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Watertown for a portion of property, property to be known as the J.C. Hopper First Edition from R2 to I-1.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the related action for the property that is already annexed and zoned to rezone it from the current zoning designation of R2, single-family attached residential, to I-1 light industrial. I'll show the map here. So then the portion of property that we just discussed that will be annexed and zoned will be added to this existing piece of property that will, is also being proposed to be rezone to I-1. That I'll stand by for any questions.
And let's see if anyone has him. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Manager Han.
Yes, thank you.
Item 11A is a second reading of an ordinance to supplement the 2024 budget for various departments and projects and state and federal grant appropriations. Finance Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the second reading. So at the last council meeting, I did bring forward all the supplements for the 2024 budget, essentially to just keep them in line with the requirement. I won't go line for line. I think everything seems in order. If there's specific questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the supplement? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Councilman Danforth.
Mr. Bob Zine? I just want to make sure, a lot of information to go through. Has, have any of these funds been moved or changed from their originally budgeted intention? That we...
No, I would say that the majority of what you're seeing is operational.
Just where we would have either, we would have underbudgeted?
Right, right. But no specific project changes.
So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the supplement. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12A is an approval of a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation to the Bramble Park Zoo. Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Director Rodick. I think you're slated to testify on this one.
Evening, Mayor, Council. As I understand this, I wasn't highly involved in this. This is just a request by the donor to have documentation of the donation for the nearly $15,000 to the zoo.
All right. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Open it up for questions, comments. Councilman Tupper. Oh, sorry. Anyone have any questions or comments? All right, we're just going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of the long-term capital improvement plan for 2026 to 2035. ICM, Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. At the last work session, we took another look at the 10-year capital plan. Through some of those conversations, we had talked about there was quite a few pieces of equipment that were removed essentially from the plan. And some of the direction I was receiving was to see if we could take those pieces of equipment that were identified as necessary pieces of equipment and put them back into the plan. So with that, that's what I did. I did work with each department that had equipment removed, and we went back through. We kind of evaluated the need for it, and then essentially how to fit it back into the plan. So currently, in front of the council, any previous equipment that was removed is back in here. We did not put back any projects. We talked about the events that are needing some improvements. Some improvements were listed at the zoo. Those are not placed in. Those will remain as a project discussion, but all the equipment did make its way back in here. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the plan? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Yeah, and I mean, Officer Bob Zine, I'd like a little bit more on this because this is a, I mean, this is a pretty major shift from where we were at just a couple of weeks ago, from where we were saying like, none of this is going to be in the long-term plan, or at least none of it at first. And I understand that there's been a lot of work put into it, and we understood some of the vehicles before. But considering the shift, I think that I'd like to give you some more leeway to just talk as-is as to why were some of the vehicles brought back in, some of them not? What was the rationale behind that? How did the process go working with the departments? What were the departments that were most affected by it?
Okay. So essentially, I think when we kind of stopped our conversation on the long-term plan, I, I do think the intent was to go back through it. And essentially, that's what we did. I will say that in the Public Works Division, the street division is the one where most of the items came from that were removed. I did sit down and I met with our street superintendent, Rob Bynon, and we did not just look at our normal seven or 10-year replacement. We actually did go piece by piece of the equipment, identified what was in good quality, what could be pushed back. A few of the pieces were pushed outside of the tenure just because they were good pieces of equipment. And I'll let Rob speak to that if he has any specifics, but I do think we, we were able to put back any necessary pieces into that. I do want to say too, I think where we're sitting now with our 10-year plan is departments did put a lot of work into getting to where we're at. I don't think this is the end of the long-term plan discussion. I think what this does is this was the departments taking their, their time and identifying their needs. And I think the next step will be for the council to have more meetings and to look into what we have done and see if, if you agree with those. And to maybe ask some more questions and see if things really are necessary, or if they're kind of just things that we have normally done. So I don't know if that helps any, or...
It, it helps, and I just want to make it clear to the public and to the council that this is the plan. I mean, it is a change from what was proposed several weeks ago, but it's a change that council had asked for in regard to, because we didn't want to sacrifice the purchase or maintenance of any vehicles that we know we would need for doing business at the cost of pursuing a project outside of the cost of daily doing business. Street Superintendent Bynon, it's nice to see you up here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please illuminate us upon the vehicles for the street department.
Okay. Yeah, the discussion that Kristen and I had was exactly what she said. We went through each piece with a fine-tooth comb and determined if we could push it outside of our standard replacement cycle. And quite a bit of this equipment is in really good shape and will be for years to come yet as long as we don't have anything catastrophic happen, you know, engine go out or something like that. That's something, if it's outside of warranty, something to deal with. But generally, that's not, that just don't happen that often. So, yeah, I feel confident that we're fine with where this stuff got put back in, so...
And Street Superintendent, I'd actually like to give you a little bit of leeway on this because a couple of weeks ago, the conversation was, do we really need to buy the vehicles, or can we take that capital and put it to a new street facility department? Or another council priority project? I don't want to automatically assume that that's the one. But understanding that this has been in discussion for quite some time for a new facility for you and your people, you do understand that there is that give and take, but I assume that that was part of what you were expressing to the ICM, Bob Zine.
Right, that's correct. You know, we, the stuff we put back in was stuff that we, we need to use in the future and just replace as it gets wore out. that we, we need to use in the future and just replace as it gets wore out. We're basically stretching in time that we're using it outside of the standard replacement cycle. But, you know, I did the math on this equipment and checked the hours and miles based on what it should, you know, where we should, where we could push it to. And I still believe we'd be okay with that, with the equipment on that cycle. So, yeah, we don't, you know, this stuff, if we didn't replace it, this is, this is all stuff we use all the time, you know? Street sweepers, motor graders, wheel loaders, dump trucks, that type of thing.
Thank you. Councilman Jerrons.
I would, Rob, bottom line, the public would like to know, and I think a few of us, what did you sort of save the city here?
You know, I didn't do the math on that. But, you know, in the first several years, I think we saved, we saved a tremendous amount by pushing this all back. Oh, gosh, I'd really be guessing. I don't know.
Quarter million, million?
Oh, it'd probably be more than that, yeah.
Finance Officer Bobzine, any ballpark figure?
Well, I guess in terms of what we're saving, we had about $4 million to put back in. And that's essentially what we did. But with that, I would say probably two, two and a half got pushed past the tenure plan just by evaluating the years and the equipment versus just the rotation.
Right.
And the idea is also that we have, we still can be looking at a council priority project. It's just how the money works out.
Yep, so the one thing, if you do look at the, the first two sheets of the plan, the second page does kind of show where we're kind of coming in. And once we hit 2028, we're in the black. So, that's two where then the council has the ability to kind of look at those years when we plan on putting money back into the unreserved fund balance.
All right, Councilman Tupper.
CFO Bobzine, is there, you said the Street Department was probably the largest. Is there any other large acquisitions? Fire Department, Police Department?
No, they, they didn't really have too much cut out of theirs. I think we put back one, anything that was put back, I did highlight it in a blue color so that you were able to identify that this was a change from our work session. I think the only things I added back was a command vehicle. And then there was a light rescue fire truck for the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bobzine, you and I had a very nice and productive conversation today. First of all, the, the format on this is something that I really like from a councilperson's standpoint. It's, it's, it's easy to read, easy to understand as long as I can find the tabs at the bottom, which I couldn't do. But anyway, one of the things that, from my perspective, when we're talking about capital expenditures, we have what are, what I call non-discretionary. And those are the things that we know. We've got fixed costs that we're going to have to pay every day. But then we have our replacement costs. Rob, the equipment that you need, we're, we're not going to not buy road graders, right? I mean, we're not going to not buy ambulances, the fire trucks, or any of them. So, they're, they're non-discretionary, but they, many of them are purely a matter of when. Really isn't a matter of if, it's when. And so, to be able to move them out, technically, we're not saving money. We're just, we're just opening up the door for other opportunities for those dollars in the meantime. What I have, what I would suggest that we do at some point is that we sit down and we take a look at this list and those items that are on the, the list of council priority project. Because to me, in actuality, they're one. And we need to look at those items and identify those that are discretionary in nature. Because that's where we're going to end up getting our prior, our understanding and where we're going to end up prioritizing them. And my understanding, Kristin, is that that's one of your goals and objectives here now is as a next step.
Yep.
Is to go through that, identify those that are, are discretionary, and then use that list as our basis to look at and to move forward. And I think that's a really, really critical step, not only with this list, Mayor, but the, the capital plan, the council capital plan, that all becomes one list.
It does.
And where are we going to put those dollars? So, I really look forward to, to that task here as a council. I think it's going to be really eye-opening and beneficial to us and to staff, I believe. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, you know, we talk about cost savings and certainly, we would think there would be some cost saving. But we do have to account for a little bit of an increase more than likely for maintenance. Maintenance costs are probably going to go up. And I think we'll have a reduction in services too because of some of those things. So, it's not all just cost savings.
Any further questions or comments? Did you have anything, Councilman Jerrons?
Well, I just have to relate that back to the farm. There's a lot of money still being made by a 1975 John Deere 4020. And they keep fixing them and they go and they go and they go and they go. So, thank you, Rob, and thank you, ICM Bobzine. Appreciate this and, and the questions that, that Councilman Danforth has brought forward. I, I believe the city's much more clear, at least council's clear too. And that's good, that's good for us. That's good for everyone.
Councilman Tupper.
I just want to kind of pick on the back of that, what, what Councilman Jerron said. Rob, city just recently had a city auction. And if I remember right, there was three dump trucks on there from the Street Department. Did any of those three run?
No, they did not.
So, let's not cut off her nose to spite her face, put it that way. So, let's not get back in that.
No, I'm with you on that. Those were trucks that were bought, I believe, in all three. And all three of them had the same engine issue that was problematic in those model engines, so.
Yeah, let's get rid of them before we get to that point, so.
Yep.
Councilman Jerrons?
Should have bought John Deere 4020s or, or, or an International 966. They'd have still been running.
Any further questions or comments? The motion is to approve the plan. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Carried, motion carries.
Motion carries. Onto item 12C, an approval of a budget supplement transfer in the amount of $22,000 for the 2024 Airport Improvements Fire Protection Wall quote. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is related to the airport T-hanger project. The fire protection wall, there's two-hour fire protection walls required in, in the, the T-hangers. And it wasn't originally included in the, the gray construction quote. We spoke to the contractor and because of scheduling and other things, they agreed to allow us to quote this. And the goal is to get the project completed by the beginning of the year so that folks can move into the T-hangers. The, the T-hanger project was originally funded with the, some FEMA dollars. And that was redirected to the FAA Equipment Relocation in 2025. And what this is doing is just transferring $22,000 to the line item to cover these costs. And then we'll move forward with the quote.
Thank you very much. Finance Officer Bobzine.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to point out that the, the action is actually to, you will be transferring dollars from Fund 212 to, to help support this. The Airport Fund alone doesn't normally have enough revenue to support some of the projects. It's pretty standard whenever, even when we do our big ones, that Fund 212 is helping support the city's portion. And this would be the same thing.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this supplement transfer? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Beeler. And we do have Airport Manager Meriwether in the back too, if you have any questions.
Oh, good, thank you. No, I'm, I'm just curious. I got to know. No, Ian, we're glad you're here, man. But what, where does this wall, is this between hang, I mean, hangers that are contiguous that butt up against each other? Or where does this firewall go?
The, the firewall, the reason for the firewall is because these hangers are like eight feet apart, I believe. And so, the code, it's 10 feet, I believe, right? 20 feet, so it's within the 20-feet distance. And so, that requires a firewall. So, we're putting it in, in the taint.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I'm going to just do a quick shout-out to Airport Manager Meriwether and whoever else was responsible. City Council did a tour, not every one of us, but a lot of us did a tour of the airport grounds about two months ago. And it was wonderful to see, better understand the entire facility. It's vast, it's huge. It comprises a lot more than just the terminal where you check in and out and eat a Dempsey's pizza. But I also wanted to say thank you for taking that historical monument sign that we found on the floor out in a field. And you put it up on display inside the terminal. It's really nice. Yeah, it's a, so, we found the old historical sign commemorating the World War II Army Air Force Base. And it was sitting in a field covered by grass. And we were able to retrieve it. And you did a wonderful job of sprucing it up and putting it in there. I love the aspect of history and adding to the terminal, so thank you for that. Anyway, that's off-topic. But any further questions about the firewall? All right. Motion is to approve the supplement transfer. We're just going to do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12D is an approval of an increase in vacation leave carryover to 240 hours, 360 hours for battalion chiefs, effective December 31, 2024, for exempt staff. And upon separation, the employee payout of accrued unused vacation will remain at a maximum of 200 hours, or 312 for battalion chiefs. We're going to go to our interim city manager, Bobzine, for more information.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, the, the action before the council tonight is, in April of 2024, previous city manager Mac sent out a memo where exempt staff was no longer going to accrue comp time. And thus, the vacation was changed essentially for the accrual for those exempt staff. Then some other correspondence happened that the plan was to increase the carryover from 200 to 240. We, I determined that that needed to be brought forward to the council. So, essentially, that's the action in front of the council is to allow for the max carryover to increase from 200 to the 240. And the payout remain the same as it currently is in the personnel policy. So, I can try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can add a little bit of that as well. So, this was something that was under consideration internally by the staff. But it was not brought to the council. And when it was, when it was discovered by the council, by several of us, we determined that there was a budgetary impact and that it should have been brought forward to the council for consideration. And in that process, we learned a lot more, such as the proposal had been considered, but it was never made formal. However, the problem that we had was some departments had been informed about the probability of this happening or possibility not all departments had. So, we had some employees operating under the belief that they would not be, that they would be capped at the 200 hours. We had some acting under the belief that they could carry over an extra 40 hours. So, there was a lot of confusion internally from the employees. And so, it puts city council in a weird position because we want to do what's right by our employees. But at the same time, we are forced into a decision that I would argue that we should have been involved in right from the get-go. Because this does have a large budgetary impact, but it also has an internal policy. So, I can understand how it got here. But at the same time, I do believe that it deserves council consideration. And that's why I worked with interim city manager, Bobzine, to bring this forward for council consideration. So, I just wanted to say, nobody's wrong, nobody's right. We're just trying to do what's right for our city employees because we have a lot of really good people. Nobody was making a wrong decision. They were just trying to live their life and make plans for the future. And we're just going to now try to figure that one out. So, in order to talk about this, can I get a motion to approve the increase in vacation leave carryover? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. We're going to open it up for council questions and consideration. I did want to say, one thing interim city manager, Bobzine, and I did do, there was originally, when this was brought forward or brought to our attention, it was going to allow the payout of 240 hours. And we thought a good compromise would just be allowing the extra 40-hour carryover for a larger vacation time, but not necessarily a payout. That would be at least a compromise to try to accommodate those employees who knew, who thought it might be coming, and those who didn't know that it was going to be coming. So, open it up for questions. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, well, yes, so you summed it up well. You know, this is kind of a challenge to work through. So, just some of the questions I, I have or clarification I'm looking for is how do we, is more from the perspective of in the years to come, not just for current staff this year. Sadly, we've got some, you know, different takes on or different, have maybe, maybe adjusted their time off already this year based off of this, with this miscommunication. So, that does make it more challenging. But again, so I'm kind of looking at this from, what's the big picture for us as a city in, in the years to come with this? So, first question is, I guess, just to clarify, you know, comp time, vacation time, sick leave, those are all three separate, you know, category, three separate entities. They don't really work together per se. But just to sort of, on that point there, the, the comp time that the management staff were able to utilize and, and, you know, I suppose that's used for, if you put extra hours in working with, you know, coming to a, like tonight at the council meeting, being here, maybe, and then you use those hours to, to have time off later in the week or later that month. And I suppose it, it probably does add up because it seems like a lot of our management staff in this, in this conversation aren't using their, weren't using their comp time because they want to get the job done. So, I, so I appreciate that. So, however, so in getting rid of the comp time in April, they're still going to be able to utilize those, that, this is the question on this. Are they still, still going to be able to take the time off? For example, tonight, using tonight as an example, Rob Bynan is here tonight for, you know, how many hours? You know, we, we do this here. And so, in theory, he'll be able to factor that in, maybe if he needs to go to a doctor's appointment here in a couple of weeks or something. That's my question is first, first and foremost, there's, there's still going to be the use of comp time just not being recorded. Would that make sense?
That's correct. So, the exempt staff, in years past, time passed, we, anytime we worked longer, we accounted for that. And then if we left early, we accounted for that with time. The way we're kind of operating right now is that exempt staff no longer track their hours other than your vacation and your sick leave.
And so, they'll be able to utilize, they're not tracking it, but they're going to still utilize the time off for, let's say if they're here a few extra hours, they can, they're still going to honor system, I suppose, take a few hours off on a Friday or something.
Correct, yep. But the current plan is that in April, we stopped accruing it. And by December, it will no longer exist.
Right, okay, thank you. So, so, yeah, so there's not accruing it no more,[1710.68] Right. Okay, thank you. So, so yeah, so there's not accruing it no more, but still going to be, still in the honor system, going to be kind of, so to me, if we're, if we're justifying extra vacation time based off of the comp time, if we're using that in the same formula, then that means we have to, in theory, utilize that vacation time for those extra hours you take off on a Friday, which I don't agree with that. But if that's a justification for more vacation time, then we should be using it for comp time. So if it's, so that's why I don't think it is, should be justification because I don't want to take away from being able to take time off. So if it's a different, if it's in a different category than, than comp time, it's, I'm not sure why it's included with this conversation. Then it's more separate. I'm just trying to make it so we look at it separately. Well, what do we think, you know, the 240 hours after, you know, 15 years of service? I, I understand the concept in that. But then, you know, if you just do the math on that, it's a, it's a month and a half of vacation, you know, that our management staff are going to be receiving. And, you know, I guess maybe is there a difference between the private sector and the government sector? But a month and a half of vacation time to me seems a little, a little, a little, just a little much, I guess, for, for staff. I appreciate everything they're doing. But then when you look at the next category, we have sick leave, which also accumulates. And what's the current sick leave accumulation for, if you could talk us through that category as well for the, for this particular exempt staff?
So for all staff, exempt and non-exempt, we all earn eight hours a month of sick leave.
Okay, so eight hours a month. And then that, that accumulates, right?
That accumulates.
Month after month, year after year.
Yep, no cap.
And so there's still, I guess, for a lack of a better term, banking. So your sick leave, you're banking for if you ever do have a medical emergency or you need to use that sick time. Or if you never have to use it, you have that bank for, for when you, when you retire, for example. So there is, that's a, that's a major benefit that I don't believe we see in the private sector. So that's a huge benefit that again, we got to remind, it's such a great, I mean, from an employee perspective, it's a, it's a good benefit to have. So we have that already banking and building and growing. We're still getting the comp time, if you will, not being calculated, but we're still getting the time off for extra hours we're putting in. Then it boils down to then on the third category, vacation time. Do you want five weeks or six weeks, you know, a month and a half or not for vacation time? To me, I'm just simplifying it this way as I'm working through this. And so just maybe that helps us all as we try to factor this through. But that's just where I'm at. I just want to get those questions clarified. So, thank you.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, a couple of things here. On the sick time thing, how much can we, how much can employees accrue there or bank there?
There is no limit.
There's no limit. So if I, I come to work every day, don't need any of my sick time, it just keeps going into, into that bank?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm struggling with this. I got to be honest. What I don't understand is there's a reason why we provide vacation time to our employees. And, and I think if everybody sat down and said, what are the top one, two, three reasons? Creating a savings account would probably not be in that list. It's, we want our employees, they've got personal time there, sick, doctor appointment, daycare, whatever it is. Funeral, is funeral separate? I think it is, isn't it?
Depends on relationship, yep.
So on, there might be those times we need personal time. And that's a good time to be able to use that, again, that vacation time when you can't use your sick time. We should be wanting our employees to use their vacation time. That's the reason why we offer vacation time. And in my opinion, for us to expand the accrual rate, to expand the, the banking hours, we're encouraging more banking or the non-use of those that benefit. I, I can't support what's, what's proposed in, in front of me. I think that a much bigger question that we've got to ask ourselves in regards to what we want to provide as a benefit, how we want to provide it. But in my opinion, I don't understand how anyone would, would accumulate 240 hours of vacation time. If that's the case, maybe we're just offering too much for that benefit. And we could maybe look at something different if that's the case. Because we should encourage and we should want our employees to use their, their vacation time. That's, that's my two cents. I do have one question. The accrual rate, there is no accrual rate change in this, correct? Or is there?
The accrual rate was proposed by the previous city manager in April.
Okay.
So it is.
It was proposed.
Yes. And that's what did happen. So we have been under that accrual rate since April.
And the council never blessed that. So if we bless this, we're blessing that, correct?
That has already happened, yes, essentially.
Okay.
Councilman Beeler.
A question, if I might, for CFO Bob Zine. The payout, one of the issues I, I can see, and tell me if I'm wrong, is once we accrue all these hours, they carry these over, carry them over, at the point where we would maybe, they would want to cash out. That's going to be at the current rate, not when they started accruing those hours, correct?
That is correct.
So if they're, just for an example, if they're making 20 bucks an hour and at the time they decide to cash in their accrual, now they're making 30 bucks an hour, that value goes up $10 an hour, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then, so now we've got, they're able to accrue to no limit for sick leave, eight hours. That's a separate bank, right?
Separate bank.
And then we've got the 240 hours of accrued done.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
I think our Parks and Recreation Director Rodick would like to say something.
Thank you. I just thought I'd just make a couple of brief comments, maybe to add some perspective. I do agree that that would be generous to carry over that amount. But again, I've been here just slightly over two years. And with the comp time going away, prior to, to this situation, we had comp. We earned comp for evenings like this, a variety of other things. You know, in just over around two years, I generated almost 180 hours of comp time. Just extra hours or whatever, and we were told to record that and what have you. So for this year in particular, it's like that, that bank is going away at the end of the year. So there will be no more, you know, utilizing that bank. So I've tried, anytime that I've taken off, I've tried to use that as opposed to vacation. I currently have 200 and roughly 280 hours of vacation on the books because I was using the comp time. So, you know, you guys, you know, you can make whatever it is decision, but essentially I will then eat the 80 hours plus probably 40 hours of comp. So, but that's kind of, you know, where, how we got here. It, it may be a, you know, a one-time thing, but just thought I would add that perspective.
I'd like to thank you for coming forward and saying that. I appreciate that. I think that that is beneficial to the city to have people impacted, have the ability to come forward and address council on that.
Thank you.
I thank you for that. Councilman Jerrance.
Could you explain to the public and myself what you mean by comp time? Some of us are, we don't get that. I mean, a lot of us don't get that. A lot of employers don't give 240 hours either of vacation.
That is unusual. When I worked for the city of Mitchell, there was, comp time was not tracked. City of Brookings did track comp time. That's essentially extra, extra hours over and above. In Brookings, it was for any, any hours over 45 hours. Here, you know, I got here, it was 40 hours. I was like, you're kidding me. But that's what was on the books. You know, I don't disagree with eliminating comp time. But, you know, because I've never had it in other areas, but that's what was established when I got here, if that helps.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask the question. Have we looked at straight PTO before? Has that ever, I know we have union negotiations, but is that, is that something that we've ever brought, brought forward? Is just PTO?
There has been discussions throughout my time here, but I think we've always just stayed with the vacation and the sick. But I think as you continue to look at it, there's benefits both ways. I mean, the sick leave is a benefit that is restricted to sick leave. And then sometimes managing is somebody really sick or is it, that's why PTO sometimes is nice. It's their time to use as they want, essentially.
You know, I just want to tell this story. I want to relate a little something. Years ago, like maybe 10, when I was in college, I, this is a true story. I, I worked at, while I was in college, I worked at Morel's in Sioux Falls, okay? I had a little short spurt there because we ran out of bridge work to do. And anyway, the, the personnel lady brought out a book. And of course, they had many, many employees there. But she showed how many, how many days, I mean, they had 30-year employees that missed no days, no sick days. And then they had 20 years that missed, mixed no, that missed no sick days. And they had calculations that would show exactly what you could expect for somebody under 18 to actually, how many days they would actually be sick in a year. And it was hardly anything, you know? So we're given all these, and I'm not saying it, I'm just relating this story to you because apparently we are sick a lot. But anyway, I, I feel Dusty's pain, you know? And I know some folks came here under the guise that we, we're going to have these benefits available to them. I see that. But, and I think any of us in business, you know, that have been in business have never seen this kind of, of sick leave and, and comp time and the, the carryover of hours, vacation time. Not in business, anyway. I've never seen anything like that. So I just want to relate that. Thank you.
Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, like, and I appreciate Director Rodick coming up and sharing his thoughts because that, that's what makes it challenging right now is we're, we're at a correction line, so-called correction line that we're trying to, to work through. And that's, there's going to be some collateral damage, if you will, potentially. But like, like I said earlier, there's the bigger picture. We're not making this decision just based off of what was communicated, right, wrong, or indifferently in the last six, eight, 10 months. It's what's this going to look like for next year, next five years, next 10 years? So that's where I'm trying to look at it. From that perspective, what's the right move? Not just because of some of this miscommunication. I mean, it's sad that, that there could be some collateral damage. That's just, but the perspective to look at it from the, the next few years. What, what do we want to do as far as a city and, and what's the right benefit package to, to navigate through this?
Community Development Manager Hanton would like to say something.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just thought too, just with Director Rodick coming up and expressing his thoughts, I'm here. So I have emailed just internally and then included the mayor. So just to have my thoughts on the record, as far as the decision with comp time going away administratively, the, it was disappointing then to hear that the decision was made to not allow the 240 hours of vacation carryover in December. So I would just say that if comp time going away, and now too, the banks probably will not always be at 240 because you're not going to have comp time to use because that's going away. But with that decision being made administratively and the additional accrual of the vacation monthly, with that all being admin, and then just with this decision then coming in December, I do, I appreciate that it's having council action with the interpretations of it. But the thing is, is yeah, the biggest thing is comp time is going to go away. So you're going to have to use your vacation banks. The other thing is sick time does not get paid out upon like leaving. Retirement, yes. Is, what is the amount? Is it 200 hours? Six, 600 at retirement. But if you leave, you don't get paid out for that. So that is just for your, your sick leave. But yeah, just wanted to, I feel like I had another point that I wanted to include. But regardless, it just, all around, just as far as like staff value and especially to finding out the switch a month in advance of the end of the year where it would go away, it would be appreciated. And especially that the compromise was made to propose it so that it doesn't have a value other than just it whole, it does have the value of allowing you to take your time. When we've been, like Dusty said, since finding out comp was going away in April, trying to burn down those banks because that is also time. I do agree that comp time was an odd benefit, so I like that we're going to straight salary. But just, just a few thoughts there.
And Manager Hanton, I want to thank you. I, I want to say for the public, I was in on a lot of these emails and the discussion early on. And, and I know, I, I'm not looking for sympathy, but I understand, I empathize with the staff when, in your case, you knew or you had been told about this probably coming. Not every employee was, so it's like you have this mindset that it's coming. And then you find out, wait a minute, it was never actually approved. I'm not asking for any sympathy, but from, imagine from a council perspective, in my mind, this has a huge budgetary impact because we're talking 40 extra hours for every single employee. And then you're also talking for everyone who's gone for an extra 40 hours. You probably have someone who has to, you have to pay to be there to cover up for them. And then you have like less services. And then we found out, well, I found out two weeks ago. And we're put in a position where we have to make this very large decision based upon people that we know and treasure as city employees, but also looking at taxpayers paying for all of this. So it's, and I'm just saying, I think for everyone, let's just understand that we're in a difficult position. Let's not, let's just figure out how we're going to get out of it. What's the best course going forward? So that's my attitude. So any other questions? Councilman Danforth?
Yep. Okay. In April, when the accrual rate changed, Kristin, the, the graph or the chart or whatever it is, how does, what was it prior to April when it changed? Was the, did everything go up a week on the, on the, like, for example, years one to five? It says 120 hours of vacation. Is it, was that, did that used to be two?
Yeah, I'm going to have our Human Resource Director Nichols step in.
I'm going to call you Darcy.
That's just fine, Councilman.
Thank you.
Yeah, we increased vacation accruals a week at every level. So four weeks went to five weeks, or two weeks went to three weeks.
So right then and there, we, let's talk about salaried versus not salaried, okay? Right there, we already gave back 40 hours to everybody, everybody. Not just those that were, that were previously getting comp time, correct?
At that time, it was for exempt staff only. This is just dealing for, with management or exempt employees.
So.
So 63 managers.
Does not relate to hourly?
No.
So the years one to five is still two hours or two weeks, I should say?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, so here's what I'm wondering. And Dusty, Ms. Hanton, I, I really do appreciate you coming up. But, and it's something that I thought about earlier is if we approve this as is, it's perpetual till it probably grows and changes down the road. When in fact, probably what we have is we've probably got an interim period where we've got to try to figure out how we work our way out of it without approving this perpetually. So have you guys looked at that to say, okay, what if, what if we approved this, but it's only for 2025? And then it goes back to what it is? Has anybody looked what it would take to get out of the scenario that we're currently in and try to help our employees through this? Because I do understand where they're coming from. I get it. But as, as other council members have said is, you know, we have to take a look at this at a council budgetarily because they're going to come a point where, where the two intersections of cost of employment i- is going to exceed our growth in, in revenues and something's going to have to change down the road. So we've got to manage our cost of employment, right? And this is one of those keys to that. So my question is, have we looked at any options to say, okay, we know we got a few issues here because of the, the changes that have taken place or promised or whatever they are? But have you, have we laid out something that said, okay, can we work our way out of this in 12 months?
No, not specifically. We haven't looked at, looked at possible solutions that way. I mean, I think, you know, you did have the discussion about PTO. That might be one way to work ourselves out of the situation we're currently in, is to go to a PTO system.
Another.
Randy. Can, can I suggest, because I know I can't tell anybody to do anything. Can I suggest that we, we try to sit down and figure out options?
Sure.
For those people that are being affected by this?
For those people that are being affected by this? How many people are, how many hourly, or I'm sorry, exempt people do we have?
It's 63 managers.
Okay, so we got 63 people that may or may not be affected by this change, correct?
Right.
Do we know out of that 63, how many really are affected by it? That are?
20 to 25.
Okay, so we really got, out of how many total employees?
240.
All right. So we got 20 to 25 people that we've got to try to figure out how to dig out of this rabbit hole, right? So let's not, let's not bury ourselves on something that's going to perpetually be here that we, we've got to deal with. Let's figure out how to deal with these 25 people fairly. I personally would like to see some effort put into that before I would ever approve this.
Finance Officer Bobzine?
One thing that we could do that doesn't then affect the vacation is the previous April action was to stop comp completely at the end of the year. An extension of comp use could help with that. I know it doesn't necessarily always help because I know some of them were burning their comp in place of the vacation. So it doesn't really help, I know Dusty was one who mentioned that, but I don't know if it's, if it's a toggle between the two, if it's something where Darcy and I have to work together to see how each employee was impacted, we can certainly do that.
I'd love to think that we have one solution for everybody. And I think sometimes there's instances where what we need to do is look at every situation and figure out a fair plan, which means maybe, maybe what we do for one person is different than the next and the next, but the effort's the same, is to dig out of this rabbit hole. It may not be one solution we carry across the board.
Okay.
I, I think we need to look at that. There are different scenarios, different situations. But I, like I said, I would, I would like to see us figure out how to get through the issues versus perpetuate this thing.
Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Danforth. This is bigger than just a voting yes or no on this agenda item. This really is a, because if it's just even one or two employees, because of this miscommunication this last year with the council and trying to work through this, I agree if there's a way, I get this kind of thinking outside the box, so whatever that may look like. Like I say, it's bigger than just trying to vote yes or no on, on 240 hours. So however we can get there, I would be, I would, I would entertain that myself.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I've worked with just about every staff, person, employee, you know, that we've got. Not every employee, but maybe more cops than I should have. No, I'm kidding. But anyway, I guess what I want to say, I think we really need to, to look at the PTO thing. I think down the road, but I think to kind of offset what we're doing with comp time, I would agree that maybe we do this for this year and then reevaluate for next year. Not to say we wouldn't do that. You know, I, I feel your pain. I know you, you want these things. If I were you guys in your shoes, I'd want it too. But I think we have to be, we have a balancing act between you guys, our trusted and beloved staff and, and the taxpayers. And that's, we're budget folks up here, so we have to, we have to look at both sides.
Councilman Tupper?
Mayor, may I make a amended motion?
You can always make it.
Okay, my motion would be to approve the 240 hours for the year 2025. Then after that, it'd be under review, so.
So it would, it would be effective for one year?
One year.
Until December 31st of 2025?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so basically setting a time sunset on it. Okay. Does everyone understand the motion? It's basically to put a sunset or a, a, a drop dead date on the, on the carryover? So it doesn't mean that it automatically goes away, it just means that we are going to have to have that conversation again in 2025 because, well, yeah, before then. But, so the carryover of 240 hours would be effective for one year. And if you wanted it after that, it would either have to be extended, but otherwise it would just automatically be going away. So that's the motion. It would basically, basically put it at dates of, let's see, so approval of an increase in vacation carryover for 240 hours effective December 31st, 2024 until December 31st, 2025. That would be a pretty good way of wording the amendment. Okay, so does, yep, yes, but I, but, but it has, but it has to be, I have to get the wording correctly. Because I could add a sentence at the end. Okay, so in order to talk about the proposed amendment, you made it, can I get a second on the proposed amendment? Motion made by Councilman Beeler. So we are now just talking about the amendment, just the amendment, okay? Any discussion on the amendment? Councilman Tupper, I'll, you made the motion, you can talk about it.
The only discussion I would have is that we need to look at this quite soon in 25, you know, so we don't end up in the bottleneck that we did at the end of this year, so.
Councilman Beeler?
Well, I don't know if this qualifies for just this amendment, but I do have, may I make a comment? Thank you. The, the PTO thing, I really think we need to look at that and give it plenty of time to, because to me, administratively, that's got to be a hell of a lot easier than dealing with sick leave and, 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 you know, was comp time and then this, vacation time. So that would certainly, I think, save, it'd be a cost savings to the, to the city just from that. Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
What would happen, and Darcy, this is for you and Kristin, I suppose, what happens if we vote this down tonight as originally proposed? Does that, does that remove our ability to bring this back as, as department heads or, or managers or, or council discussion in January? Are we locked out of that opportunity?
So I think the, the biggest issue right now is just the timing. You know, it's, it's the employees that are going to hit two weeks here and have time where they're either going to try to use it or they know it's going to get taken away as a December 31st. Because what we essentially do is any employee currently that would have over 200 hours of vacation, those extra hours are wiped out and they start their year with 200. So it's just.
How many people are, am I back to that, 20 to 25?
Yep.
Because here's my concern. I believe we, we run the, the, the risk of exacerbating this issue by putting it off a year. Because now you're going to let people accumulate to 240 for, for the coming year. What do we do towards the end of the year now, a year from now? And they go, we don't know what they're going to do, that darn council. We don't know who's going to be on the council, right? I think we, we run the risk of, of making it a worse situation versus allowing you guys to do your job, come back to this body of people with suggestions for options and then make a decision. I would prefer to see it that way versus saying, all right, let's kick the can. I'm, I'm using your terminology, Randy. Kick the can down the road for a year. That's really not what we, we need to do. Let's, let's work out the problems. We have 25 people, let's figure it out. I can't help but believe we can't work it out somehow. That's, that's my two cents.
Councilman Jerns?
I was just thinking, sitting back, is there a compromise bringing back some comp time as much as I don't like it?
City Engineer Peterson, you want to say something?
I'll, I'll just relate my story. When I, I came from the private sector and so I, I mean, the vacation hours I had matched pretty closely what, what's on the proposal. And when I came here, I ended up essentially losing two weeks of accrued vacation time every year. But the comp time kind of counteracted. So I kind of liked the comp time. If taking away the comp time, I, I really do think that there's got to be some tradeoff and the extra vacation was kind of that tradeoff. So taking vacation time, adding comp time, or taking away the comp time and keeping the vacation time is kind of where, where I'd like to see. And then kind of specifically with the rollover, I mean, essentially, you know, there's two weeks here and, you know, got to burn through a lot of vacation time. And that, that's just kind of where some of us are sitting because we were thinking we had that 240 carryover.
Officer Bobzine?
So the one way that I guess could fix the issue for those employees is if the council gave us direction because stated, you know, Dusty burned through his comp. So if we don't want to deal with the vacation, it's just at ours, we essentially give anybody that would have had 240 with a mixture of the vacation and the comp, we essentially give them the 40 hours. And it'll either be in essence, comp or vacation, a one time allowed. Keep.
Okay.
Call it comp.
We're still technically on the amendment. You know, I know that we're kind of branching off on it. Director Nichols, did you have something to add?
No, no. That's what I was thinking too, is that we would give it back 40 hours in comp and allow them to use it.
So I'll support the amendment, and this is just me entering the debate, not, you know, I'm just saying as my vote, I'll support the amendment in large part because of the timing issue. As I said, I don't think anyone on council was aware of this three, four weeks ago. This is a huge change. There were some employees who were told about it, some not. It's a bad situation that we've been put in and we're basically given three weeks to clean this up, one official meeting. One official meeting, three weeks to clean it up. And this has been over a year in the making. I've got to say, the reason why comp time was taken away was because of a decision by the council. I want to remind all of us that, okay? So we made that decision to take comp time away. So we can't then criticize staff for wanting to give something back to the people that when you take something away. That's just part of, you know, when you talk with people and try to treat them well. I would also like to caution against this attitude that it's only 20 or 25 employees. I would contend it's every city employee because how we treat 20 is how we treat 400 or 240. Because, and it's not just, are we going to give them what they want? That's not what it's about. But are we going to treat them, are we, are we going to look them in the face and say, I will, I want to work with you? And I know that that's what everyone is saying, you know, it's like, what can we do to work with them? But I don't want to just get this attitude that it only applies to 20, to 20 people because this does apply to how we treat our staff and we want to treasure and treat all of our staff with respect. So picture as if you're negotiating this for 240 employees, not just 20. So that would be how I'm looking at it. And I know that might not be a perfect solution to basically buy us some time, but knowing the time crunch that we're under and also knowing the situ, the odd circumstances that we are under where we have a transition in the head of our government before we find the next city manager. And I don't want to create any impetus in any of our staff to want to leave their employment at the city right now. I want to keep everyone here until we can bring in the next city manager and then we can hopefully figure out how to treat, how to handle it from there. I know it's not a perfect solution, but we're in a far from perfect problem that we're facing here. So I'm just trying to come up with something that I can live with, that can go forward, that can also be something that I hope staff can be in favor of. Councilman Shetty?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And yes, I appreciate the, the dialogue tonight, everybody. It's, you know, I like to think we come here without having a, our vote for sure, we want to talk through this, we want to listen to what people are saying and so we can get a better grip on the best way forward. I see, well, Ms. Bobzine, wherever you were, I C M Bobzine? Your proposal, this, this comes in with the vote that we're talking here, but your, your thoughts, not really proposal, but your thoughts, can that be, that could be worked out in, in this meeting potentially, correct? And, and with the, getting 40 hours back, but it could be added comp times instead. Or, I mean, so that could be done regard, you know, with, without, let's say this vote, let's say if we didn't, this, this didn't pass, we still could have a, have a, have a way out. That can be tailored to specific employees. Because if we go this direction, then we got 60, 60-plus employees that are getting an extra week of vacation. That's about five months worth of vacation time next year. And so that's where, you know, this, this, what you had mentioned could potentially be tailored to individual people and be done in a, in a speediest time, like even this evening potentially. I just want to clarify my thought process, see if I'm hearing this correctly.
Yeah, so essentially, I think what we're going to run into is there were definitely employees running under use your comp, you know? So they were doing that, so they essentially maybe don't have any comp left on the books, but then they're going to have the over 200 of vacation. So it's just to, to figure out how to work with those individuals. I mean, essentially, if you have zero comp and you've only got 200 hours, you're getting nothing because you're at where it should be. So this is only really for those individuals that are above the 200 or then in this case would still have comp on the books that they were not able to use.
Councilman Tupper?
So trying to think this out, what's the difference if we, if we give them this 40 hours for one year or if we give them 40 hours extra comp time? It's the same thing at the end of the day.
It's the same thing. You're giving 40 hours.
In the other way, we have a, basically a ruling that it's got a sunset clause and it'll go away until this body makes a different decision, so.
Councilman Danforth? Any, any further comments?
Well, as soon as I can breathe. No, I appreciate you giving me this opportunity. Here's my thoughts on this. I understand that we have all of our employees that, that we watch out for. I also fully believe that when we have an issue with an employee or 20 to 25 employees, how we respond to that versus just saying, no. And that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm saying, let's look at each one of those situations where we know we have an issue and let's work out something that, that works. I would sure hope that if I'm some, any of those other employees that aren't directly affected by this, that they would look at that and say, I really appreciate the fact that they worked with our fellow employees and came up with a solution that was fair. I don't, the fact we've got 20 or 25 people with a, I'll call it a situation, doesn't necessitate that we deal with all of our employees the same. And Kristin, and I, maybe I interpreted you wrong, but you said that they, they expect something in return, right? If you're going to take, they did get the hourly, or I'm sorry, the, the exempt employees got an extra week of vacation, correct? Well, I think you did. You said they didn't, they expect something in return. They did get something in return. They got an additional week. Am I correct in that?
You're correct. I didn't say that they expected. I said that was the action that was taken, was in April, the vacation accruals increased when we stopped accruing comp.
Okay, so the point is, is that there was an offset to some extent.
Yes, there was.
So again, I don't want to see, I don't think we really understand what the, what the, the 12-month delay in this. I don't know if we really understand what the end result of that may be. I just shouldn't take a little bit of time upfront here, try to figure out what we can do for our 20 or 25 employees that are situational. And I think that's very positive. We'll figure it out and then we move on.
Any further comments on the amendment?
Yep.
On the amendment? Okay, so just to be clear, we're going to vote on the amendment, which is to basically put a sunset clause. It'll now read, basically, approval of an increase in vacation leave carryover effective December 31st, 2024 until December 31st, 2025. So it puts a sunset clause on it. Any questions on the proposed amendment? Okay. If you're in favor of that amendment, you'll say aye. If you're opposed, you're going to say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shetty?
Nay.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Nay.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Nay.
Motion fails on a tied vote. We're back onto the main motion. And just to explain, since Councilman Peters is not here, we have an even number. So you need a majority of a vote for something to pass. We don't have a majority, therefore it is considered failed. So we are back to consideration of the main motion, which is the approval of the vacation leave carryover to 240 hours. Councilman Shuddy?
Okay, so now let's discuss this tailored version that we can try to, try to work out, come up with a, with amendment to, to work out this, so we can get this done this evening for, for the, the right wordage to get this done correctly.
Councilman Tupper?
So, and I don't totally disagree with Councilman Danforth, that we got 20, 25 people with a, with an issue. But knowing that comp time went away, how many people through, from April until now took care of that issue? Do you have any idea? So in all reality, you have no fairness to it. Am I correct?
I wouldn't know how many were able to use up their comp time.
But they used comp time because it was going away and didn't use vacation time.
I would say there was a mixture, yes.
Yeah, probably a pretty good mixture. I know common sense would tell me to use up my comp time, especially being I was told there's going to be an extra 40 hours of vacation. So do we really have 20, 25 people? Or do we have 40? Or do we have 30? We don't know that. It's going to take a lot of work for you girls to figure that out in the next two weeks. And especially being now that we're not going to allow 40 hours vacation time, extra, City Hall's going to be pretty empty. There's going to be a lot of people using two weeks vacation between now and first year.
And I'll just chime in on that before I pass it off to anyone else, but I do wonder how many other employees are going to come forward and say, you know, look, I wasn't planning on taking my vacation time right now. I wasn't even planning on running my comp time, but if this is what I'm facing, maybe I will. You know, I, I just don't know because it's like, we might be, I understand not wanting to put off a problem and, or finding a solution until the new year, but I also know that finding a solution in the six days before Christmas and a couple of days that we have afterwards are, is going to be very difficult. So anyway, Councilman Danforth has been waiting.
Darcy, the 20 to 25, as we had talked, the 20 to 25, are those the people that have comp time remaining? So we do know that number, correct? What, what was the, all right, maybe I'll ask that question.
Depends on how you look at the problem, you know?
Well, what, what were you referencing when you said 20 to 25? What, what was that 20 to 25 people? What was their issue that you brought that number up?
I think we're referencing the employees that are going to run into the carryover issue.
For vacation.
For vacation.
And is that due to?
Expecting to be able to carry over the 240.
Okay, has nothing to do with comp time?
That's a, that's a tough one to determine. I mean, I myself have used comp time down, other people have. Would you consider me to be affected? I don't know that I would consider myself to be affected, you know? I think it more affects the people that have the vacation that they were expecting to be able to use that now they're not able to, or carry over, excuse me, not use.
Do you know, do you have a rough idea of what it would take to bring information back that we clearly understand where people are at with, with vacation and comp time for the January 6th? Is it January 6th?
January 6th, yep.
I mean, you know.
Yeah, we can do that.
We're only into the new year by a couple of years.
Couple of days.
Feels like a couple of years right now, a couple of days. So can we table this thing till, till that for, so we understand or move it to a decision point on January 6th?
I think the problem is, is that the staff that doesn't know the direction council is going to take is not going to try to keep those on the books. They're going to want to use those days. And that, and that's really the predicament we're in right now of the timing. Because the staff that are currently in the situation of knowing, I'm not going to get down to the 200 hours, right? They're going to take their week to get to the 200. It's essentially, I think that has been, I don't want to speak, but I mean, I think that has been kind of the, the staff situation that's faced is not knowing, how do we use them or do we not use them? I don't know if that's a fair statement, but.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'm really confused right now. Because are we talking about a substitute motion? We're going to say it goes down to those 24 people. We got to try to determine what they might have for comp time because we may not know. So that might be a, what I'm hearing down here is this would be a substitute motion or are we going to vote for that, the original motion? As it sits? Because that's for everybody. And that stays, right?
So, so the thing though about the carryover regard, so in the current policy, the carryover is capped at 200. If you don't have 200, you're not, you're not, it doesn't matter. So essentially, this action is just saying that instead of a cap of 200, if you're an employee that has 260, you're getting brought down on January 1st to 240. If you're an employee that's at 220 and we leave it at 240, you're staying at 220 essentially. So it's just that cutoff as of December 31st, what hours of vacation you are going to be carrying over at the start of January 25. That's essentially all it's doing. So if you're an employee that's at 100 hours, this is really a relative.
Right.
It, it has no relevance to you at all. So it's, I'd be fair to say it's some of our longer-term employees who are earning at a much higher rate that are going to be affected and also those who probably went through their comp and didn't use as much of their vacation. But no, this won't affect every employee because if you don't have the hours on the books, you're not.
No, I, I get that part. I get that part. But are we, is there going to be a substitute motion now? Is that what you're thinking, Mike? With this proposal that you've got? Or are we going to vote for that?
I have yet to hear a substitute motion.
Yeah, there hasn't been a motion.
No, that's what I'm asking you. Would there, is that going to require a substitute motion unless we postpone this vote?
Well, if you, if you vote right now, Mayor, if I may, on what is, it's straight to the agenda, okay? And it becomes policy, period, going forward. I don't like setting policy for basically all of our, our employees over situation that I can't even, I don't even understand, I can't put my arms around because I don't know. I don't know how many people truly are affected by this. I don't want to, I don't want to exacerbate something for everyone when this is the size of the problem. That, that's what I'm saying. So I personally would rather have some homework done and brought back to us so we understand what we're voting for and, and what that actually means and what some of the options are to get out of this scenario fairly, all parties concerned. I would rather put it off and, for a couple of weeks and, and have this discussion, get information between now and then so we can understand what we're voting for.
Is that going to require a special meeting then? I would assume.
Not if, not if we do it on January 6th, no.
Can we wait that long? No, we can't. We got to have it before that.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So there are some folks that this would affect if we don't make a decision this evening that would affect how they decide their vacation time out. If we were to make an amendment to keep it at the 200 hours and yet follow up with a list on the honor system, looking, you know, having people, having emails, talk with, talk with whomever, whatever that list may be of those who we can tailor this for them that because they fit that category, then we can approve that list on January 6th. So if we make an amendment for the 200 hours, you know, where it currently has been, not, not the new amendment or not the new offer here. And then just like I say, and then, but then we also have it in there listed that with, with the gathering of those and they'll, they'll get their extra 40 hours or whatever number of hours it may be that they'll get, be it back as comp time or, or extra vacation time to be approved on January 6th. I mean, is that, are you tracking with me? Can we make an amendment that kind of tailors it so people can make a decision now for vacation time and yet still those who it did affect, they can get, they can still get some, some hours back in, in that particular case?
Finance Officer Bobzine?
I, I think the biggest direction that I would need and, and Darcy would need is just, is the council in favor of compensating those who would lose 40 hours, 40 hours, regardless of if it's vacation or comp, no matter how we do it? Is the council in favor of that? Essentially, if you were going to lose 40 hours at the end of the year, is the council's in support of giving back those 40 hours, whether it be in a vacation or a comp time?
Councilman Shuddy, you asked the question. I'll let you continue.
Yes, thank you. Personally, I would be in favor of that.
Councilman Tupper, then Councilman Jurens.
Mr. HR Manager, Nichols. Does that leave us in any, and maybe I'm stupid for asking this, but I got to ask it. Does that leave us in any way of a chance of discriminating against one employee? Possibility?
No, I don't think so.
Boy, I know if I wasn't getting the, the extra treatment, I know I wouldn't feel right. So I want to know who's going to answer the phone at City Hall in the next two weeks, so.
Councilman Jurens?
Well, Randy, that's already started anyway. I was here last week and a lot of them are already using it anyway, so they've figured it out. We're still operating. I would support Dan's idea and your idea to figure out a way to compensate them, whether you want to call it comp time or vacation time. I'm ready to bring forth an amendment that would, that would compensate them fairly, one-time compensation and then go to the 200 hours.
Okay, so I just wanted to find a way to word this. So, and work with me, anyone over there. So I would say.
I would say.
Word it, so you basically scrapped this entire agenda item. You would replace it with, you would do a substitute motion or basically it would, could be an amendment, you strike it clean, it would be a hoghouse amendment. And you strike, strike it all clean and then you basically say, city council empowers interim city manager Bobzine, just leave it there. Don't even, you can work with whoever else on staff you want to, but to enter into negotiations with employees who have two, over 200 hours of accrued or.
Vacation.
Of vacation time, to enter into negotiations with employees with over 200 hours of accrued vacation time into seeking an agreement.
And I think you would put the cap at no more than 40 hours.
Yeah.
You know? So essentially, if you've got 280 hours, you're at 240, so.
So, yeah, so at no more than 240 hours.
Yep.
So that would be the amendment that Councilman Jurens is proposing? Or do you want to give that credit to Councilman Shuddy?
I'll give that credit to Darcy.
I C M. Bobzine because we're, I mean, but yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call it, since you made the actual motion, Councilman Shuddy just talked about it. So the motion is to amend and empower city ma, interim, yes, city attorney carico?
Just make sure that you're giving them the power to just do it rather than just negotiate and come back.
Yeah, to, to.
Process.
Process.
To process.
To, okay, so. Allow the interim city manager the ability to process an agreement with employees that have over 200 accrued vacation hours to not exceed a settlement of no more than 240 hours.
Forty.
Perfect.
Okay? So that is the motion from Councilman Jurens. Is there a second? Motion made by Councilman Jurens and seconded by Councilman Shuddy. We are on discussion of just the amendment, okay? Anyone would like to discuss the amendment? Councilman Beeler?
Kristin, are you cool with that?
Yes.
I, I mean, I'll just speak now as a person who's going to vote. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it because as much as, as much as you're saying you're entering into an unknown by passing this and entering into discussions in February or March or even August, September, we're entering, I, I just don't know how many employees are affected, how many people, I mean, yeah, there's, let's put it this way, a good employee is worth their weight in gold or in this case, worth their weight in, worth their weight in vacation hours. And we've been put in a horrible position here. I hate that we've been put in this position, but I'm just trying to come up with the, the way that I think that I would want to be treated if I was on the other side. And I would say, as difficult as this is, I'm going to just say, I would agree with the original proposal. So as that stands, I won't be voting for the amendment simply because I will be voting for the original motion if, that if we ever get there. I'm not saying that we will, but I'll get to you after, Councilman Tupper?
Well, I'm just going to make a personal comment to the employees of the city of Watertown. I apologize because it shouldn't be this difficult. And I don't think we're showing the respect where the respect is needed. So take my apology. That's my personal apology.
Councilman Danforth? And Councilman Tupper, I'm just going to ask you, I want to clarify, I know that you're speaking to the employees, but I also want to give you the chance to say, you're not speaking ill of the council. I mean.
Absolutely not. Nope, nope. That's, that was my comment. That's why I said that was my comment. I'm not speaking ill of the council, so that's my opinion. I'm entitled to that, so.
I'm just trying to, look, I'm thinking in my head like Abraham Lincoln quote, with malice towards none and charity towards, towards all. I'm not mad at anybody here. We've just been put in a bad position and I'm trying to come up with the best solution that I think would apply to the most people. I'm sorry, Councilman Danforth has been waiting. And just to remind everyone, we're on the amendment, okay?
Can, can this apply to anybody that currently has more than 200 hours and nobody else? So in other words, I'm going to pick a number, I don't know. We got 40 employees that they're at less than 200 and we got 10 that are over 200. Could we have a vote on something that only allows that 40 to carry up to the 2, that 10 or whatever that number is? Let's not, let's not exacerbate it by opening up that can of worms to everybody when it's not an issue right now for everybody. So can we say, this is only going to pertain to those people that have something greater than 200 hours because now they're not burning off hours, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and they get the one year to take care of it. But it's only going to be to those that effective end of the day on December 31st that have more than 200 hours. So it's fair to them.
And that's how, that's how we handle it right now. I mean, it's just that it's 200, you're increasing it to 240.
But if I'm an employee with less than 200 now, I can go up to 240 this next year, correct?
No, this is just for the carryover. This is just the carryover hours.
Okay.
There's the difference between the accrual and the carryover. So the carryover used to be, or still is, 200 hours max. So if I'm an employee that is at 280 and I didn't burn all those hours as of December 31st. So if I'm an employee that is at 280 and I didn't burn all those hours as of December 31st, I automatically went to 200. It was proposed by the previous manager that that 200 be increased to 240. So essentially, if you never got there, you're not part of the, you're not, nothing's going to change for you. It's all those employees that were over, essentially. So it's how you're going to start your January 2025 vacation bank. So if you were never there, you're not even going to, payroll's not even going to look at you as, as doing a change to your vacation. So I don't know if that helps clarify. This is only the carryover.
Councilman Danforth? Councilman Shuddy.
On one comment earlier, I would beg to differ. We all are here trying to make the right decision. There's nothing to be sorry about because we're all six sitting here trying to do what's best for our employees. So I guess I'm, I am encouraged by what I see here this evening, the staff that has shared and council listening. And we're trying to come up with a plan to, to help everybody get through this and hopefully everybody gets a win out of this. This is the goal, with the intention to come up with something possibly better than approving this 240, like Councilman Beeler has said with the PTO. There might be some other conversations we can do this next year to make it even, who knows? Maybe it can be better yet. Maybe we're selling ourselves short on this, on the, on the, on the original item here. So this area is still trying to make it so it all works for, for everybody. That's my, my perspective.
Any further conversation on the amendment? I'll, okay, so it's Councilman Jurens' amendment. So the, the Councilman Tupper's was already voted down. So the amendment will be to basically hog house this, strike everything and say, what was the wording? It was basically council empowers interim city manager Bob Zine to enter into a process of.
Capping, essentially, yeah.
Basically, capping employees at 240 hours for any employee who has two, over 200, or 200 or more hours of accrued vacation time.
Correct.
So that's the, that's going to be the amendment that you're voting on. I'll just say, I'm going to vote against the amendment because I prefer the original motion. Because that was brought forward after some negotiation and granted it's difficult talk. So I prefer the original motion, so that's why I'm going to vote against the amendment. However, if the amendments gets passed, I will be voting for the amendment because it's better than telling all city employees that you're, you're out. Because at least then they'd be getting something. I just prefer the original motion because I think it's, it's cleaner. It's something that I can go to the employees and say, we tried our best and we're all trying our best. I mean, I just want to say, before we vote on the amendment, I want to say thank you to interim city manager Bob Zine and everyone else who was involved in this because I can't tell you how displeased I was when I found out that this was never even going to be brought forward to council for discussion. That is wrong. This is a huge budgetary impact. This is a huge decision for the city. And the idea that this could be passed without council approval is just wrong. That is not what the citizens of Watertown deserve. That's not why any one of us ran. That's not why anyone in this community would want anyone to run. So I am displeased that we are in this position. But we are trying to do our best to rectify the situation. That's all we're trying to do. So I want to thank you for allowing us to have this debate because this shows the employees that we want to take this seriously. This shows, this shows the citizens of Watertown. This shows everyone that there's a lot to this. And I'd rather have these difficult conversations and have a split vote. I'd, I actually, that's, I won't say it's more fun, but it's way more, it's way, it's way more true to the process. And I applaud that. I think that's great. So I thank you for working with us to bring this forward and having this discussion. And I think this is the right way of doing government, even if it's, you know, can be a difficult conversation. Councilman Jurens, you had something to say?
I'm with the mayor. I was ticked to hear about this. I'm ticked, ticked off, and that's a really nice word, to hear how this went down. I also believe with Councilman Shuddy that we are doing and we're compromising extremely well. I would, I would not put it on to the taxpayer. I mean, we were voted in by the taxpayer to be careful and to do wise and make wise decisions with the, with the money that's not anyone's but the whole citizens in this city. There's 21,000 people. I mean, we're not here trying to take something away. I am not here to apologize. We are offering a compromise to compensate for this mistake. And when I see, when I see HR Darcy, I want to call it just Darcy.
Director Nichols.
Director of HR Darcy.
Director Nichols.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'm trying to be proper here. And I C M Bob Zine shake their head and say, this can be done. And it's not all of those employees that, that are affected. So I, I am here to, to make this compensation fair, to, to do what's right for the, the citizens of Watertown, but also do the right things to keep the right employees that are, that are really, really needed to make this city keep going.
And Councilman, I'm just going to gavel you down here for a second and just say, you sold Watertown short. You called us a town of 21,000. We have 23,500 people, if not a little bit more. So that will be taken out of your pay.
That's what the sign says.
But anyway, so the motion is on the amendment.
Bug with your leave.
Okay, the motion is on the amendment. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, so the amendment we are discussing is to basically strike all this language and empower city manager Bob Zine to reach an agreement with any employee who has over 200 accrued vacation hours, not to, into an agreement that does not exceed 240 vacation hours. Any discussion, any question on that? Councilman Shuddy?
What about the battalion chiefs?
Oh.
Oh, they get their 312.
Just want to make sure that they're not.
What do they go to?
Yeah, make sure they're not pigeonholing that.
They get 336.
Make sure that's.
336.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
336 for battalion chiefs.
Thank you for catching that. Okay, so we'll add that to the motion. Okay, any discussion, any question on what the motion to amend is? Okay, if you're in favor of that amendment, you're going to vote aye. If you're against it, you're going to vote nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
No.
Beeler?
Nay.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
No.
Jurens?
Aye.
Motion fails for lack of a majority. And now we're in a situation, it's unfortunate that Councilman Peters cannot be here to break this tie. It would have been a lot better, but we are back on discussion of the original motion. Any?
Yeah.
Question, conversation, Councilman Jurens?
I, I don't like how this went down. I don't like how this was handled. And I will be voting no against this.
Councilman Tupper?
The thing about it is we've all been aware of the situation for three weeks.
Not quite three weeks.
Well, close to three weeks, so. It's just kind of disturbing that, and all due respect. I mean, I'm not trying to disrespect any of you guys. I mean, I have the utmost respect for everybody. Kind of disturbing that we can't come to some kind of solution, so.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, so now we just, okay, so now we refocus. That's where we're at, right? So this is. We'll get there this evening. So now as I work through this thought process, we still can, even if, let's just say if this, what's on the agenda gets voted in, let's say if it makes it through. There's not an end date on this. It's, but we still can, we still can have discussions to think about where we move forward. We still could this next year. It doesn't mean we're, although in sometimes in government, once you approve something like this, it's going to be there for, hard to undo. However, we could technically revisit this because it's going to be hard for me to vote no because then we are shortchanging some employees because of this. There would be collateral damage and I don't want to see that.
Councilman Shuddy, can I offer, I think I know where you're going. I'd like to offer a potential solution because, and I apologize. I don't want to walk out of here tonight without having something for the employees that is, that are affected. I prefer the original motion. However, I feel that that's also going to fail on a tied vote. I would rather have the amendment that gives us something for the people affected than nothing. So I'm going to use my power under Robert's rules. Any person who votes in the negative can make a motion to reconsider a vote. So I voted against that motion to amend, so I'm going to make a motion to reconsider. So basically, I'm making a motion to reconsider the amendment. The last one. Motion made by Holene, seconded by Danforth. So if anyone is having a question, because it's like, I think I know where you were going, Councilman Shuddy, which is what I said when I was going to vote against the amendment, but I was going to vote for the original motion. I don't want to walk out of here tonight without having something for those employees who are affected and every other employee who is going to see what we're doing tonight and how much effort we are putting into accommodate every employee. That's what I, that's what I want the message to be. More than the hours, I want them to see the effort that we're putting forward to it. So even though I was against the amendment originally, I'd rather vote for the amendment and have something for the employees that are affected and everyone else than nothing. And I fear that that's the situation that we'd be in. So I made the motion to reconsider. That's what we're going to do. So we're basically back to the same amendment that we were at five minutes ago. Is there any question on that? Okay, now if you're in favor of that amendment, you're going to vote aye? Yes, Councilman Danforth, sorry.
Yeah, and I don't want to drag this on. I mean, I don't even know the score of the Vikings game at this point. But you know, if somebody cuts their finger, we don't put a Band-Aid on everybody. We put a Band-Aid and we take care of the person that's hurt. That is what I think was suggested. That's what I think in the end that you were suggesting, take care of the problem. That's what I was suggesting. The only difference is either we go back and come back with proposals or we come up with a solution. This is not about all of our employees. This is about those that are being adversely affected by this whole scenario. And that's got to be our focus. What can we do fairly for them and for us? And to vote on the, the, Mayor, and I appreciate you doing this, to vote on the, the agenda item as is, signs that into law, so to speak. And we all know that just doesn't change. It just, how do you pull that back? So I'm just saying, Mayor, I appreciate you, you having the courage and to do that. It's the right decision. Let's, let's take care of those that are affected. Everybody else is going to see that. They should see it. They should appreciate it. A lot of effort here on this side from all people for the discussion.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Okay, and just to clarify, the motion to reconsider is just to reconsider the amendment. Then we will have to vote again on the amendment. So I'm going to just do a voice vote on the motion to reconsider. All those in favor of reconsidering, vote aye. Aye? Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Now we are back into discussion upon the amendment. So the amendment. No, Councilman Jurens' amendment, okay? So the, basically, this is to empower I C M Bob Zine to reach an agreement with those employees who are affected, okay? That's the amendment. Any discussion, any further discussion necessary on that amendment? So I'll just reiterate that I'd rather walk out of here with something for those employees affected than nothing. And I fear that without the amendment, we might walk out with nothing. So this is a good, it's not perfect, but again, we all know what the situation is that we were handed. We're just trying to come up with something. All those, all those in favor will vote aye, opposed nay? Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Nay.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. So now we are on to item 12D, which is basically what we just voted upon. So we voted to amend item 12D. Now we have to vote again. So basically just, it's the same vote, but we had to amend it. So just to explain to everyone, we amended the entire motion, but that does not give final action. We still have to deal with the final action. This was to amend 12D. So now we have to vote on 12D, which is the amended motion, okay? So all those in favor of the amended motion of 12D will vote aye, opposed nay? Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Shuddy?
Nay.
Wait, Councilman Tupper, did you have a? Okay, okay. No, no, okay, so a motion to amend can only amend the main motion. The main motion was item 12D, which is, which is what we see there, okay? So we amended that. We struck all of that language. And now the motion is to allow I C M Bob Zine. It's basically the one that we just did, but just to explain, that is to amend, that, so this is the main motion. A motion to amend is not final action. A motion to amend is to tailor the main motion. So we amended the main motion. Now we have the main motion as amended. So anyway, so. Actually, this vote how you did the last time. So all those in favor of 12D as amended will vote aye, opposed nay? Officer Bob Zine?
Okay, Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Nay.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12E is an approval of a 2025 aviation general liability policy renewal with Old Republic Aerospace without the terrorism risk insurance coverage or war liability and authorization for the chief financial officer to issue a special check to pay their premium in the amount of roughly $6,000. Said Finance Officer Bob Zine.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This action is in front of the council. We do this annually. We go out for basically proposals and as you can see at the bottom, we only received the two back. And we have been with Old Republic for a lot of years. There was no increase to the premium. We would continue to not take the terrorism and pretty much stay the same. So if there's any questions, I can answer them.
All right, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve and authorize. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve and authorize. All those in favor will say aye? Aye? Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Item 12F, approval of a resolution authorizing to write off the unpaid loan balance for the inter-fund loan between the capital improvement fund and tax increment fund number two. Finance Officer Bob Zine.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I believe, I think, I can't remember. I think it was September. I came before the council and I asked to dissolve TIF number two. That TIF has met its 20 years as of December 31st. TIF two is Mallard Point and that was, the infrastructure improvements for that TIF were paid for by our fund 212, which is our capital improvement fund. It was an inter-fund loan for a little over a million dollars, capitalized interest of 7%. Throughout all the payments of that TIF's property tax, it was not able to fulfill that loan. So essentially, we have a $1.5 million loan that was between the capital improvement fund and TIF number two fund that now that the TIF has dissolved, needs to be written off the balance. That is kept on the books of the finance office. And essentially, we did receive money. I think with the high interest rate and the fact that it was capitalized interest, it kind of got behind and it just was not going to catch up. And we also know that I think it didn't develop as much as we anticipated either. So if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you very much. First, I need a motion to approve the resolution. First, I need a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you. What is the amount, out of curiosity?
Of the write-off?
Yeah.
One point five. It's in the
Okay.
One million five hundred twenty-six thousand hundred seventeen dollars and forty-four cents.
Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
We, we're talking about a loan.
Yep.
So who was, who was, who are the two parties of that loan?
The city, essentially.
Oh, it's
It's ours.
It, it's all us, not like it's somebody out there.
Right.
And the reason why this has occurred is, is because the, the land didn't sell and get developed like we had hoped twenty years ago.
Right. So the goal was always that Fund Two Twelve, Capital Improvement Fund, had the cash to pay for the infrastructure, and as the property taxes came in, it was paying back Fund Two Twelve. It just was never able to with the interest rate of seven percent and the fact that it was capitalized.
And who owns that land now? The development company?
Yes, and then whoever develops
Today, it goes to them, correct?
Yes.
So there is a, a recoup, per se, not directly to the city.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further conversation? If you're in favor of the resolution, you're going to vote aye. If you're against it, vote nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item twelve G is an approval of a resolution, adoption of revisions of the engineering design standards. City engineer Peterson or community development manager Hanton. I'd like to hear from both of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I mean, minus, sorry, minus section one-ten.
Yep. So the original engineering design standards were, were approved in March twenty twenty, the last time that it was revised was in January twenty twenty-two, so it's almost two years ago. We just have some updates. We've discussed them last couple of meetings. Section one-ten is the language resort regarding the mailbox placements, which we're not going, don't want to be approved at this time. I'll stand by for any questions.
Manager Hanton, did you have anything to add? Actually, please do. I mean, let's just own the daycare stuff. I know that you've talked about it before, but discuss that a little bit because I know that it will be mentioned. Yeah.
So the daycare will actually be a part of the planning commission.
Yeah, planning commission, sorry.
Yep, and I mean, I can get ahead of that if you want, under new business or anything.
Nope, nope.
I just wanted to add, at least for the mailboxes, that we had further discussion with the United States Postal Service and talked with other communities that they have expressed that this type of situation has been implemented, which is using the cluster mailboxes. And they, there's been pushback in those communities that I've stated last time with Huron and Brickings. I reached out to Brickings. So it is still a USPS decision and the, the federal mandates of the direction they're going per their policies. So at this time, even though the, the language that we were including in the engineering design standards wasn't definitive or telling us, telling the developer one way or another, it was more so laying out the process of what to expect as far as when you're doing a development plan, but ultimately, that that was still USPS's jurisdiction. So, but just to continue discussion and obviously support developers and the concerns that they have and, and also not wanting for the city to be responsible for ongoing maintenance of these cluster mailboxes, we just decided to omit it for now.
Comment before the motion, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yep.
To her.
Just clarify for me, I, my understanding is that it is not a mandate from the U S Postal Service. There is no mandate. It's, it's, they recommend it and they'd like the cities to approve that, but they don't mandate it, correct?
So in their policy guidebook, they did, um, they would like to transition to that. Now, this has been in place since, I want to say, twenty thirteen, but it just has decided on the local postmaster as to how it has been implemented. So that, I don't know if, I don't know if, if we can call it a mandate. All I know is that it's their regulations and there are, they do have their guidebook or they're basically their own engineering design standards of what is recommended that they follow. But it's their jurisdiction. And they do recommend that the cluster mailboxes be used for new subdivisions.
But if they don't mandate it, then it isn't, then it becomes the city's jurisdiction. Because there's so many issues with this thing that have to be considered with the keys, the, the maintenance, the construction, the location, you know, there's a lot of things that go along with this thing and, and the cost. I mean, it's a fair chunk of change that gets reassessed back to the landowners, too. But I, that's the key word to me. Is it mandated? And if the city says, we don't want it for our developers, are they going to not deliver the mail, or are they going to deliver the mail?
I think that they would not deliver the mail.
I, I don't agree with that, but Brandy will have to, we'll have to discuss it.
Which is the reason why we struck it for conversation tonight. So I do need a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Beeler, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any further discussion on this? Councilman Shuddy?
So again, this is about the road width, correct?
Yes.
So I've got about a half hour's worth of questions here.
Oh, no.
I do have a couple of questions. I did drive through Prairie Haven, I believe that's what it's called, right up there by Derby Downs? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Correct, okay. And I drove through Derby Downs, and just to kind of look at the road width and kind of gauge it a little bit myself, and it does make a difference, two more feet will make a difference on traffic being able to pass between parked cars. So then what's the value, right? What's the value in this, be, be it public safety, be it value to the developers, city as far as, you know, maintaining down the road, maintenance on it, there's different ways of looking at the value. Personally speaking, for me, I'm still at the point of, I see the value of having the road at a proper width for safety of even widening your, opening your car doors, traffic going by, to even snow removal. Snow removal, theoretically, as we like to see it, curb to curb, it's not always curb to curb. It's, there's, it's, when it goes, it's, there's a, there's eight, ten, twelve inches sometimes that builds up. So then you start, you make the two, the road two foot narrower when you go another foot or more narrower with snow.